All right, thank you all for coming. This is the regular meeting of the District 25 School Board. We're starting a little early today because we have a public hearing on the reduction of force. So with that, we'll start some discussion with Brian K., Dr. K.
Thank you. Checking the official time, 7:04. Good evening, my name is Brian K. and I am the Assistant Superintendent in Arlington Heights School District 25. It is now 7:04 PM and I would like to begin the Reduction in Force, or RIF, public hearing. A public reduction in force hearing is necessary when a school district rifles five or more individuals. Each winter, the school district analyzes its staffing plans based on student enrollment projections, program needs, mandated state programming, student identified needs, and the goals of the district. We do our best to forecast the needs of our staff members and to make decisions that will ensure that our school district is fiscally responsible. Since we are still putting our staffing plans together and evaluating our student enrollment, the Board of Education will be looking to take action on riffing staff members through an honorable dismissal this evening. Thank you. I will now open the floor for any public comments.
And with that, is there anybody here who would wish to speak on the rif in the public hearing? In hearing and seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Dr. K., and we'll move on. So now we'll open the public meeting of District 25. Today is March 17th, 2022. If we could note the role and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I note a quorum tonight. So we'll start with public address to the board. Let's go to the next page. I'm reading paper today, not the computer. So before we start the public address, I will read a script. It's similar to every month, but here we go. "The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate its meeting in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow the following guidelines. Address the board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. Identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allowed time in order to conserve time to allow maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. Please be respectful and courteous, and the board requests that you not make any statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community." And with that, we'll start. Pile's a lot lighter. Elizabeth Pizzoza? I'm sorry for that.
(inaudible).
Pizzoza?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's nice to see you guys and your faces. I love that. Okay, my name is Elizabeth Pizzoza. This is my first time here speaking in front of you all, but by the looks of what I see going on, seems as though I may become an in-person regular. I have three small children, two of which go to Ivy. What I've seen and heard going on in our district these past two years is mind-boggling. We deserve and need a district that respects the relationship between administration, parents, teachers, and students alike. That means a more transparent system and curriculum. Many of us are aware of the DEI audit happening this school year, but do not have any answers as to what specifically will be implemented next year. This is a great disservice to our students and the parents who have been inquiring about this from the beginning. Parents deserve to know what their children are being taught in school, as it is a place where they need to feel safe sending their children. I understand the gender identity agenda has been postponed tonight once again, but I want to make clear that this is going to be a conversation you will need to address. School needs to feel safe for everyone. My daughter, for instance, who's in kindergarten this year, came home twice already in the past two weeks, telling me how uncomfortable it was to see a boy in the girls' bathroom on two separate occasions. She was told by a fifth grader that she shouldn't be there and to go back to class. Whether or not this student is opting to change his identity, this is a safety issue that has jeopardized her comfort level in a very vulnerable space. Private parts are exposed while in these bathrooms, and there needs to be boundaries when parents aren't able to supervise them. This is merely one example of what is already happening, and the thought of not being aware or not being told because parents are not entitled to know, or that knowledge must be earned, which has been taken from other leaked training documents, this is beyond my comprehension. These are minors, dependents under their parents, not administration. Children at this age need to feel safe in our schools in order to learn. I want my children to thrive here along with all the other students enrolled, but I cannot help but question if this is even a safe learning environment. I encourage you not to push your community to seek alternative private education, as we moved here specifically for this district. Look forward and do not, or no, look forward and do better for the next generation of D-25 students. Thanks."
Thank you. Next we have Laura DePlancher.
Hi, I'm Laura DePlancher. Sorry, it's New Orleans.
I'm batting, I'm batting.
We're not expecting that.
I'm sorry.
I live at 307 South Remmer Avenue in Arlington Heights. I have a third grader and a kindergartner in District 25. My daughter goes to Windsor, which is our neighborhood school. My son goes to Westgate, which is the Integrated Services Program. And I realize this is a moot point, really, because you guys really did a great job of examining that proposal last week, but I wanted to be a parent and kind of a face and let you know how important it is to me to keep the Integrated Services Program at Westgate. So my experience with Westgate has shown me that the Integrated Services is an amazing special education resource in this district. He's been, my son has been in special education through preschool and now at Westgate. And while it's not ideal, I grew up in Arlington Heights, we bought a house in Windsor, that's where I went to school. It's not ideal that he's not at his homeschool, but the resources at Westgate are amazing. And when I look at the district and the collaboration at Westgate, it doesn't, it's not just the special educators, and I know that a teacher came in and remarked on this, it's the whole community. And you can tell that it's been there for 19 years. I mean, it extends in every part of the school. My son can, he can access that Gen Ed curriculum in a way that he wouldn't at a different school, so I really think it's important that you keep it at Westgate. And as you look at inclusion practices and the district considers it, I think you should be going to Westgate and you should be using that as your model, really, because they're doing it right. My son, he has a sensible longing at Westgate, and this is a kid that has social and developmental delays. He's a very bright boy. Academics have never been an issue, but that social piece and that pragmatic piece and that functional behavior piece in the classroom, and what Westgate does as a whole to facilitate his ability to access education, I think, really is top amongst districts. I think that the Integrated Services Program would be a model for inclusion practices. And that's really why I'm here. I just wanted to remark that as the district looks at how to increase inclusivity for special education, go to Westgate, see what they're doing. I mean, they're doing an amazing job and definitely not something you want to dismantle. And just how important it is, especially for these kids, that his Integrated Services peers, they're part of a Gen Ed class, it's co-taught. So this is, he feels like he is a Westgate Wolverine. He's, you know, he's the self-proclaimed Westgate leader. They have this social thinking curriculum that touches every part of the school. They've built it so that this is evident everywhere, and he can function so well there. So I think, you know, and these are kids, his Special Educated, Integrated Services peers are kids that struggle with change and transition, so the detriment to this group of kids to move it would be more substantial than any Gen Ed, you know, population. He's also in that group of kids, the third graders, that would potentially be moved for fifth grade, and while that was on my radar, this is a much bigger deal, because for them to be separate and apart from their Gen Ed peers would be so substantial to their self-esteem. So I just wanted to give a commentary about how great I think Westgate is, how great the teachers are, and just the whole community. The school has, the community has welcomed Integrated Services and you see it. So thank you for keeping it there.
Thank you. And having no more public comment, I guess slips. Those can be made available to the board members, we'll read those and we'll take that into account. But moving on, let's look at the consent agenda. So this is an action item, I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes, Anisha.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, Personnel Report and Addendum to the Personnel Report. B, Treasurer's Report. C, Invoices. D, Regular and Close Session Meeting Minutes of February 24th, 2022. E, Special Committee of the Whole Kindergarten Meeting and Close Session Meeting Minutes of March 8th, 22.
Thank you, Anisha. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions, comments, or concerns on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we can take it to a vote. Start with Greg.
Yes.
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 All right, motion passes. Moving on, we have communications to and from board members, and we'll start with NSSEO. And I'll start with NSSEO. Being here, not here at the last meeting, I did not get to highlight Giovanni from Thomas. He was a spectacular kid who was at Timber Ridge, and I think one of the things that Timber Ridge makes it unique is that when you're there, you get brought back to your homeschool, and Giovanni is doing that. He's doing some great things at Timber Ridge to get him reintegrated back into his classroom. And here, his story was just spectacular. He was our shining star for February. And kudos to Giovanni. I'm sorry, I didn't get to highlight him last meeting, but tonight, we get to talk about that as well. The 2nd of March, we had the Timber Ridge Gym Ribbon Cutting, and I know Anisha and Rich were there. Spectacular facility, I know, I was talking about it a lot with the Dirt Hill was the kind of point that I was pointing out, but just where they have come from, start to finish, it was just a great facility for the kids at Timber Ridge to kind of get all the energy out. And one of the things that they pointed out was that they had the Jesse White tumblers in the old gymnasium, and these guys were almost hitting the ceiling as they were doing the acrobats. And I know, well, maybe the Timber Ridge kids would get to that point, but that was one of the things that kind of pointed out that they needed to move on. So a great facility, great kind of exercise room with bikes, treadmills, just a lot of modern things that these kids can be using. So that is NSSEO, kind of two months in a nutshell. Moving on to IASB, Anisha.
Yeah, no, Scott, I want to say I brought a towel back for the lounge here so that you folks can remember the NSSEO.
Oh, you didn't bring a cookie?
I did, I ate the cookie. I ate the cookie, but I did bring that, so a memento for you guys. It was a really very sweet event, like Scott said, it was good to be there. As far as ISB, there is going to be a Spring ISB Dinner on April 20th, 6:15, at Lincoln Junior High School. There'll be a tour at 5:30, and there was, is going to be a presentation by Ralph Martieri, is that how you say it?
Martieri.
Martieri, from the Center for Tax and Budget Accountability. And so thanks to Dr. Vine, she serves on the ISB dinner kind of planning and that executive level, so thanks to Dr. Vine for doing that. So that's that spring dinner. And as far as ISB, we had a four-part Crucial Conversations Book Club, and that book club finished last week. So I finished reading the book, it's all lighted up and highlighted, so anybody who want to, you want to borrow it, you guys can have it. I'll actually leave it with Dr. Vine, so if anybody wants to have it, you guys can look at it. And actually, I got an idea from my board colleagues at ISB, because some of them had talked about how they're going to take that book that they did at the ISB level and do it as a book club for their own boards as part of their board development. So I thought we can discuss that at another point, maybe put it on an appropriate time and a topic to talk about whether our board would like to do something like that and pick a book that would be helpful for us. So let me see, is there anything else as far as ISB? That is it.
Thank you, Anisha. Moving on, we have EdRed, and we'll start with Rich.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things to note. The April 25th is the Annual EdRed Dinner. Fortunately, some of us have another engagement that evening. Stacy and I have another exciting engagement that evening, so we will not be able to attend that particular piece. In the general legislative front, though, not much has happened recently because the legislatures have been adjourned. They came back this week, and then they'll adjourn again on the 8th. So they have about, just about a month to work through some things. But there are some things that are out of the House and are at the Senate that are impactful to us. The first one being House Bill 1167, which is the rework of the one that was vetoed by the governor. And this is really to be retroactive, the COVID leave for teachers, administrators, and contractors, things of that nature. That one is now back at the Senate, it passed the House and is now sitting at the Senate, so we'll see how that kind of moves out of that particular area. So House Bill 3254 provides that a school district will require books that are included as part of any course, instruction, reading assignment, those types of things, must include books that are written by diverse authors, including but not limited to African-American women, so Native Americans, Latinx, Asians, things of that nature. So that'll be something that, again, as we look at curriculum discussions, that'll have an impact into that area as well. House Bill 4089 requires school districts provide a plant-based school lunch option to those students who submit a prior request to the school district requesting a plant-based school option, lunch option. So if you didn't like the, our option here is another way to look at that particular process there. What's that?
(inaudible).
Let's see, House Bill 4203, no public body, including school districts, may display any racially derogative language, including racial slurs, within its building, on its property, or at public meetings. Seems kind of self-evident in that regard. Let's see, House Bill 4243, and this one is interesting. Prohibits a school district from withholding a student's grades, transcripts, or diploma because of an unpaid balance on the student's school account. So again, interesting, but something to think through. Let's see, I think these are kind of interesting. The only one other item in the interest of time that I would bring up is, I think everyone, either today or yesterday, got their statement of economic interest. So it's, this year, I believe it'll be a little bit different in terms of the questions and how we're supposed to answer those, but we have till May 2nd to file those particular statements, so get right on it. You know, if we adjourn at 10, you have an opportunity tonight. Jump on it. Thank you.
10 o'clock, huh?
Rich, I thought you were offering to file. You'll be our FCI filing.
There's a, thank you for the food theme on that, the dinner and the lunch, I'm getting hungry now. Stacy, do you have anything to add? All right, thank you. Moving on, Board Governance Framework, and then this month, I am going to go with Meetings of the Board. We understand that the Board meetings are meetings of the Board held in public, not open forum town hall meetings. We will keep this in mind as we conduct our meetings, allowing the public to provide input at the time allotted on the agenda to ensure that multiple voices of the community inform Board deliberations. However, when the Board deliberates, it will be a time for the Board to listen and learn from each other. So with that, I'm going to move on to other Board communication, and I'll segue into what I was going to add for this, is that we had a coffee with the Board on Saturday, and that, I think, was a time for the public to interact with the Board. We had two Board members at Patton with Dr. Vine for a chance to engage with the public in a more informal way than a school board meeting where you're sitting across from us, we're listening and not responding. It was a great experience for us three, unfortunately. The turnout wasn't as much as we would hope for. So in the future, we will make that more public, and we will hope for more community engagement to just speak to the community and Board members and have a much beneficial dialogue, I think would be the way I'd like to put it. So in the future, we hope to see you out there. Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to congratulate the Music for Youth program. This past Sunday, they did their annual spring concert. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but my feeler said it was a great concert overall, so once again, congratulations to that program, as it, music is an important part of an educational experience, so glad that those opportunities are there.
Yes, and this year, it was at Forest View, so it was local, so it was good. Dr. Vine, I saw you there. I was there, my daughter played, and it was a great, a great concert, so thank you, Rich. Anybody else? Anisha?
Yeah, I just want to add, the Arlington Heights Chamber had their 75th Gala a couple weeks ago on a Friday night, and, you know, the business community here in Arlington Heights does a lot to support our schools, and so it was a wonderful event featuring all the small businesses in our community, so it was good to be there to cheer them on.
Anything else? All right, moving on, let's go to the PTA.
She is not here this evening.
Ooh, Nicole Barbier is not here, so do we have anything on her behalf?
Yeah, but she did state that she will be here at the next meeting with information about the PTA Council's fundraiser that is wrapping up tomorrow.
Sounds good. ABC25, Gina.
So everybody's in fundraising mode, it's that time of year, so ABC25 is no different, so they get GetBurb Challenge. You've seen it posted probably in your mailers from your principals, all over the social media, as well as the ABC25 website. Again, all of the grants and all of the fundraising is 100% given back to the teachers within our district in the form of grants that they write, and it is, this year, we distribute it across all of our schools, so it's really good. And like I said, 100% of that money goes to our teachers to be able to fund new and innovative ideas in their area. So if you haven't signed up for the GetBurb Challenge, please sign up. If you don't want to actually participate, you can be a virtual runner, which is perfectly acceptable. We'll be happy to just enjoy your donation and be able to use it in that manner for giving back to the school. In addition, the other thing that is being worked on right now is 2022, 2023 volunteers for anybody who has an interest in joining the team and being part of the community for the foundation for raising money for our teachers. Are you registering, Rich?
No, I was just going to say, I was just, we were just about to look at, go in there, see when the date is, and it looks like it is, wait, hold on.
April 30th.
30th. There you go.
Saturday. Yep, Saturday, April 30th.
And you're our team captain, and we're all going to be there, right Gina?
Yes and no, I will, I will be there for setup, but then I have a, I have a first communion happening, so.
Got it, okay.
I'm a virtual runner this year.
I heard there might be a special surprise DJ that's going to be emceeing.
There will be, there's a very special surprise DJ, and you could also see some very special surprise mascots participating in the event as well. That remains to be seen, it's currently in the works.
Very mysterious.
ABC25Challenge.org.
There you go.
There you go.
All right, moving on, we have the ATA, Allison Byrd, please come on up.
Okay, so I am a honorary teacher of South Middle School tonight, so I'm going to fill you in on all the exciting happenings going on over there. So I'm going to start off with focusing on some of the clubs and extracurriculars that they have going on at South. There we go. Just not comfortable. Okay, South has a variety of club offerings that are inclusive and diverse. The Flock is a collection of student clubs that have the underlying purpose of at least one of the following values: leadership, wellness, inclusion, connection. Currently, the Flock includes Student Council, Wellness Club, Prison Club, and Unity Club. You can see a picture of the Unity Club there. Other club offerings at South are the Pokemon Club, Choir, Rainbow Loom Club, the Dungeons and Dragons Tabletop Games Club, 6th Grade Intermurals, LGBTQ and Alliance Club, Jazz Ensemble, Drama, Craft Club, a Formula One Club, an Anime Club, Nintendo Switch Club, Paws in Need, Math Counts Chess Club, and Ping Pong Club, to name just a few. And as you can see here, is a picture of the Ski Club. The South Ski Club took its very first trip on Friday, January 28th, to Wilmot Mountain. There were 120 students who attended the trip. A big thank you to Mrs. Kearns for coordinating the trip, and all of the chaperones, fun was had by all. The next picture is the Sweetheart Volleyball Club. South hosted the annual Sweetheart Tournament February 12th through 19th, thanks to Coach Vassos and Coach Fano for an awesome season there. We have South's Jazz Ensemble that performed at the Jazz Jamboree at Thomas Middle School on January 29th. They also performed at the Jazz in the Meadows Festival at Rolling Meadows High School on February 25th. They received a Division One rating, and that is a picture from their performance at the Jazz in the Meadows. This year marks the second year that South has had a wrestling team. The regional tournament was on March 5th, and they had five wrestlers qualify for sectionals, which is awesome. The South Seventh Science 2022 Microscope Photography Competition, so this quarter, 7th grade science students have been documenting their microscope work through photography. They achieve these impressive photos by preparing samples, focusing a microscope or stereoscope, and lining up a camera through the lenses. Work was submitted in three categories: a progressive magnification series, a biological sample, and a non-biological sample. So the first pictures you're about to see are the, from the category of the progressive magnification series. First place is up on top, The Monarch Butterfly Wing by Mari Effert. Second place, Blackberry Mold by Nathan Trudeau, and third place was Bleached Dye and Natural Hair by Brylee Nelson. Pretty exciting. Me neither. This would be the category of biological sample. The first place was Red Onion and Saltwater 40 Times by Logan Webb. Second place was Skin Cells Dye and Methylene Blue by Abigail Rogers. And third place winner was a Flower Bud 20 Times by Grace Lizzie. And then our last group category is the non-biological samples. First place is Soap Bubbles 100 Times by Bella Groark. Second place was Surgical Mask Fibers, fitting, 40 Times by Dylan Smith. And the third place is Eagle on a Quarter by Max Zurich. Pretty cool. The next picture you're going to look at is the Olympic Unit During Life Skills in ILP. As you can see there, the who, where, why, and what, and some graphs for the different countries and their awards or their medals. 8th grade science Plant/Mars Challenge is an international competition where students are given simulated Martian soil created by the University of Central Florida, and are challenged to design an experiment to grow robust crops that might survive on Mars. Each class on East and West is competing as a team, and NASA will be using the student data in preparation for the next human mission to Mars, which is super cool. And as you can see, those students are hard at work. This is the 8th grade March Mammal Madness. This is a contest to see who can predict the most successful animal among a group of 65, and is played in a bracket-style system like the NCAA March Madness. The battles are played out via Twitter. The winners of each round of combat are announced twice a week in a fun-filled video summary led by rodent puppet announcers. And each class will have one winner, the highest score per class, and as you can see, very excited students. Which animal will be the 2022 champion? We'll have to contact South to find out. And finally, I have some pictures of their ruler, not finally, almost finally, their ruler SEL implementation of Best Self, some portraits, and then some other pictures with the mood meter and working as a group on some other SEL activities. How about I show you the pictures? And then last but not least are 8th grade graduation pictures for our outgoing graduates, soon-to-be graduates from South, and I have a couple of slides for these guys. All dressed in their best. And that's it. Thank you for letting me present tonight and for representing South.
Always exciting, I love the energy, that's... Moving on, I mean, we're going to be skipping a couple, Student Learning, Student Services, this is a, to Business and Finance, Municipal Advisor Agreement. This is a, uh, to business and finance, municipal advisor agreement. And this is, this is an action, no, it's, yes, this is an action item. I'm sorry. It took a second there for the load. Um, I need a motion. Yes, Rich.
I move that the Board of Education approve the municipal advisor agreement.
Uh, I move that the Board of Education approve the municipal advisor agreement with Raymond James and Associates Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-seven, one hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred.
Thanks, Rich. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Greg. Um, discussion.
Uh, so this, Raymond James served as our, uh, representative also on the bond sales from two thousand fifteen through two thousand eighteen. Because of the possible size of, um, a referendum bond sale, uh, the strength of our district credit being a triple-A rating, the possibility of a lot of interest in terms of from underwriters who might want to invest in district bonds, they are preferring to do a competitive sale, uh, with whatever transaction, uh, we end up going with. Um, and therefore, under the municipal securities laws, they require a contract, a documenta- documentation of the relationship, um, between us and Raymond James, which, um, wasn't required in our previous, um, bond sales. Um, and we did, um, negotiate a rate, uh, lower than the original proposal. So it is based on per thousand dollars of bonds sold. Um, but we negotiated the cap to, uh, be fifty cents less than what they were originally at, which, um, is in line and lower than most of the rates that our neighboring districts have been paying in the last number of years for bond sales to their municipal providers.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. We'll take it to a vote. We'll start with Rich.
Yes.
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 All right, the motion passes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. It would've passed either way, but I just... Sorry, Greg. I stepped on your toes. Uh, moving on, we have the Annual Report on Tax Exempt Bonds. Discussion?
Uh, this is a report that, um, I'm required to share with the board every year, um, based on a variety of, uh, questions I respond to, not submitting anywhere, but having in case we get an audit. Um, related to those two thousand fifteen through two thousand eighteen bonds, um, the only issue that was not tax exempt was twenty-seventeen. Um, but because we're still paying off those, we've spent all the proceeds of those bonds for all the building additions. Uh, we met all the requirements in terms of arbitrage and everything. Uh, but until we make the final payment on the bonds, I have to continue to do this annual analysis.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to, uh, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three student fees. Discussion, Stacy?
Uh, so as always at this time of year, I'm making recommendations to the board regarding our fees for next year. Um, at this point, you know, we've had some consideration of a technology fee, but, um, aren't recommending one at this specific time. In terms of transportation, our initial meeting with our bus company, uh, we're looking at a twelve percent increase, uh, simply based on all the types of inflationary costs that they're seeing in terms of what they have to pay drivers, insurance costs, that we're all seeing at this time. Um, it would be my recommendation that that, that increase gets incorporated into the paid rider rate, um, as well, which would be an increase of fifty-two dollars in that rate. Uh, in terms of food service, um, we do have a requirement that the fee that we charge for paid student lunches, um, has to be an amount that's higher as a weighted, higher than the weighted average of the USDA rates, to ensure we're not subsidizing our paid lunches through the free lunches covered by the National School Lunch Program. Uh, we did increase our fees, um, for twenty-twenty-one by fifteen cents. Um, however, we've been running the program at no cost because of the, um, National School Lunch Program covering and allowing all, uh, meals to be free to students. So based on, um, the weighted average expectations for next year, as well as the increased cost of food and supplies, they're facing the same grocery level increases that, uh, we're seeing in the, the supermarkets. Um, it's about fifteen to thirty percent higher than it's been in the past. So we are recommending an increase in our school lunch pricing of a quarter to three dollars and twenty-five cents. And additionally, we're recommending getting rid of the tiered pricing at the middle school, um, and just going with one flat fixed fee. It will allow for a wider range of offerings at our On-Stake kitchens, where we can just have the same fee price for all meals, regardless of what the students are choosing. Additionally, we, uh, with our school breakfast program, we are proposing a fifteen cent increase to a dollar seventy-five for next year. Not at this point recommending any changes to our regular student fees, um, and that, uh, regular, sorry, uh, registration and middle school athletic participation fees. In terms of our fees for consumable products that we sell to the students and they pay a fee for, we, as always, would recommend, um, charging the actual price. Um, a couple of them I've noted, we have been advised by suppliers, there will be an increase, um, in terms of like gym shirts and gym shorts, anywhere from four percent to twenty percent, but they're not ready to actually give us pricing yet. Um, and the same thing with our graduation gowns. We're not able to get pricing for next year at this time. Um, but I would propose that, um, I mean, the recommendation will be we charge what act- what our actual cost is. Um, and then in terms of the children's circle tuition, we did increase it, um, for twenty-twenty-one, um, and feel it should stay the same for this upcoming year, with probably another increase then in the following year.
All right, that's... Any questions, comments, on that?
I just had a quick question. So Stacy, you know, with any of these costs, like, like say even the graduation cost, I know it's a little bit higher, for any families who can't afford it, then what is the procedure there? Do the school identify those families? Or can the families come? Like, is there any process for that?
So we do include in the school budgets an allocation for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, um, to have those fees waived. School, um, parents who can't, are struggling to be able to pay fees can always reach out to the school to work out some way or a payment plan or something like that. Um, but we certainly would never, um, have a child stand out in any way amongst their peers if they weren't able to pay a fee. So with gym uniforms, with graduation gowns, they would all be able to get that.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Stacy. Moving on to facilities management, uh, the summer construction bid awards, and this is an action item, so I need a motion.
Mr. President.
Yes, Greg.
Just a question first. There's three, so do you want me to read all three, or you want a second after everyone, or how, how would you prefer?
It should be just, uh, have a presentation.
I think we've read all three at once, and then you give the second after that.
Okay. All right, sorry.
One read, one second.
Okay. Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education award bid package number one, base bid while rejecting alternates one, two, and three for general trades to monitor construction in the amount of nine hundred fifty-nine thousand two hundred dollars for the twenty-twenty-two capital improvements and immediately assign the contract with the contractor to Nicholas and Associates, Inc. as construction manager. I also move that the Board of Education award bid package number two, base bid while rejecting alternates one, two, and three for HVAC to DeKalb Mechanical in the amount of eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the twenty-twenty-two capital improvements and immediately assign the contract with the contractor to Nicholas and Associates, Inc. as construction manager. And finally, I move that the Board of Education award bid package number three, base bid while rejecting alternates one, two, and three for electrical to Shoreline Electric in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-two capital improvements and immediately assign the contract with the contractor to Nicholas and Associates, Inc. as construction manager.
All right, thank you, Greg. Um, do I have a second on all three of those bids? Thank you, Brian. Discussion?
Yeah, good evening. These are for the summer of twenty-twenty-two, some of the capital projects that were identified, primarily the Greenbrier boilers, Ivy Hill air handler unit, uh, Patton and Windsor exterior ephes, which is the stucco-looking finish on the exterior of the buildings, uh, multiple roofing sections, window caulking at South Middle School, uh, masonry caulking and repairs at Olive, and then select parking lot lighting repair. So again, these were identified in the twenty-twenty-two capital projects. So looking to award these contractors and get these going for the summer of twenty-twenty-two.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns on the entire or specific items?
Just a, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, just a quick question. I know we're using, um, a contract manager for these. And I, I don't recall historically that we used the contract manager for small, I don't wanna call these small, I mean, these are large efforts. But, you know, for summer capital type improvements, I don't believe we've used them before, so...
Yeah, we've, we've blended them a little bit. Uh, I think this one, we were a little bit more with the supply chain delays and things like that. We wanted to take a little bit of risk off the district, so that's why we're looking this. We think it's a package that's big enough yet that would be manageable by the construction manager. Uh, so typically, once we get over about a million dollars in a package, we're starting to look at the construction manager. Uh, so that's why we are this year looking to move some of these products over to the construction manager more as a, a risk mitigation factor, uh, for this year.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none. We can take it to a vote. Does anybody wanna separate, or we just vote all, all at once? I think we just kit and caboodle. All right, starting with Aneeshia.
Yes.
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 All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to personal and planning. Um, this is, we had the hearing earlier, and this is the, the part of the, the job that we don't like to do. So, uh, Dr. K. This is an action item, so, uh, we are going to need a motion.
President?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution A, authorizing the honorable dismissal of part-time clerical assistants, contact tracers.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Discussion?
All right, thank you. We take great pride in hiring amazing staff in District Twenty-Five. We put a tremendous amount of effort into hiring the best staff members possible. Each winter, the school district analyzes its staffing plans based on student enrollment projections, program needs, mandated state programming, the student identified needs, and the goals of the district. We do our best to forecast the needs of the staff members and make decisions that will ensure that our school district is fiscally responsible. Since we are still putting our staffing plans together and evaluating our student and staffing needs, we are asking that the Board of Education take action on Resolution A and honorably discharge the two part-time clerical assistants serving in the role of contact tracers this evening pursuant to section ten dash twenty-three point five of the Illinois School Code. As we gain further information on our student enrollment, staffing needs, and whether we anticipate needing contact tracing in the future, we will attempt to recall these two high-quality staff members as needed. Are there any questions?
All right, hearing none. Uh, I'll start the vote on this one. Uh, I'll say yes.
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 All right, motion passes. Moving on to dismissal of probationary teachers. This is Resolution B. Um, I need a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution B, authorizing the honorable dismissal of probationary teachers.
Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Dr. K.
So similar to my statements for Resolution A, we take great pride in hiring amazing teachers in District Twenty-Five. We put a tremendous amount of effort in hiring the best staff members possible that are available, that we're able to attract here. Since we are still putting our staffing plans together and evaluating our student enrollment, we are asking that the Board of Education take action on Resolution B and honorably discharge the nine Group One staff members this evening pursuant to section twenty-four dash twelve of the Illinois School Code. As we gain further information on our student enrollment, we will attempt to recall as many of these staff members as possible. Are there any questions?
Hearing none. We'll start with Brian on the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, motion passes. Continuing, dismissal and reassignment of probationary teachers, Resolution C. I need a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution C, authorizing dismissal and reassignment of probationary teacher.
Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Dr. K.
Similar to Resolutions A and B, I bring Resolution C. And again, it's related to our staffing plans and our student enrollment. We are asking, or I am asking, that the Board of Education take action on Resolution C and honorably dis- honorably discharge and reassign the one staff member to a part-time teaching position this evening to section, according to section twenty-four twelve. We may need a new battery. Uh, as we gain further information on our student enrollment, we will attempt to recall this staff member to additional FTE as quickly as possible. Are there any question?
Hearing none. We'll start with Gina.
Yes.
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 All right, motion passes.
I'm sorry, you have a second for this?
I believe Rich. And finally, this is another action item. It's the dismissal of first, second, and third-year probationary teachers for reasons other than reduction in force, Resolution D. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution D, authorizing the dismissal of first, second, and third-year probationary teachers for reasons other than reduction in force and not reemploy the teachers for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Dr. K.
Thank you. The final resolution this evening, Resolution D, is the dismissal of a probationary teacher who are in their first, second, or third year. As we continue to build our staffing plans and evaluate our student enrollment projections and individual student needs, we are asking that the Board of Education take action on Resolution D and dismiss the one staff member at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and not reemploy for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year this evening pursuant to section twenty-four dash eleven of the Illinois School Code. Are there any questions?
All right, hearing none. We'll start the vote with Chad.
Yes.
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 All right, motion passes. Thank you, Dr. K. We'll bring some more batteries next month. And moving on, it's the superintendent report. We'll start with the Freedom of In- Freedom of Information Act report.
Thank you. So you have listed in front of you the, uh, Freedom of Information Act requests that we've responded to, um, since the last board meeting.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, we'll move on. The strategic plan update. Dr. Byne.
Thank you. Mr. Fano, do you guys have this presentation? Thank you.
Change of batteries.
Well, yeah, he's working on the microphone. Uh, as the board knows, uh, the board adopted, uh, the strategic plan for District Twenty-Five, uh, several months ago. Um, and we take that, uh, approval as kind of our marching orders to move forward. Um, and, uh, the board did ask us to bring back some more information, um, following the action team work that was done, um, to give the board a sense of, as the staff now does the work, uh, part of this, um, to also share, um, some of our plans and, and how it will be measured. Uh, so with my colleagues tonight, we'll review some items to, uh, each of the five, um, areas on the strategic plan. As a reminder, um, we had many community members involved in, uh, both phases of this project, the original, uh, strategic plan creation, and then the work with our action teams. We're following a Plan Do Study Act, um, process, and so we've been- We're following a Plan Do Study Act process, and so we've been in the planning stages with the original team and with our each-goal action team. But we're now moved into the do stage. The do stage of this is really where staff does the work that our community members and our committee members have planned. We're starting some of that. We're eager to start some of that after tonight's meeting. We will then be coming back to the action team committees and sharing with them what's been occurring, the data resulting from that. They will study that, talk about changes and edits that we should make moving forward, and then go into the act phase, and then we just keep through, keep going through that circular process. Again, we feel the plan phase in general has ended, and we are in the kind of actually doing the work phase now. See if I can make this work. Oh, of course I can. As a reminder, I know the board knows our strategic plan well. You also have it up on the wall behind us. We did great work over many, many months with many participants to create this plan. And moving forward, we're going to each talk about a specific goal area, kind of remind you what that goal is, and then talk about some of the steps in moving forward and some of the ways we'll measure those steps. So student achievement goal, I believe, is Dr. Fitzpatrick and Dr. Les Wicky. It's not working. Just talk loudly.
As a reminder to the board, the student achievement goal for the district is to, wow, refine and extend instructional practices, programs, and services to ensure all learners are academically ready for high school and beyond. And the strategies that need attention to achieve this goal at a higher level are refine and expand our continuum of services to better meet the needs of all students and close performance gaps for identified student subgroups, and ensure high student engagement and ownership of their learning through hands-on, authentic, real-life learning opportunities and innovative teaching practices. So, the Student Achievement Action Team included staff and community members and met multiple times during the fall. Also, as a reminder to the board, the team highlighted the following four items that they want the district to focus on. And those include: increase inclusive practices, develop an assessment plan that encompasses qualitative and quantitative data and information, increase teacher competencies to meet the needs of all learners, and implement consistent intervention and support across all district schools. So this slide provides the staff action steps, or the do, portion of the Plan Do Study Act model. These are the steps the staff will work on to accomplish the student achievement goal. First, using Spring 2022 as a baseline and based on the local growth model in the Arlington Heights School District overall summary, increase the percentage of students, including those in identified subgroups, who meet or exceed expected growth in reading and math measured at the end of each spring testing cycle. Also, expand differentiated instructional practices and learning opportunities to meet the diverse cultural and learning needs of our students and ensure high student engagement, as evidenced by achieving 100% teacher professional development participation rates and 100% agree or strongly agree evaluation feedback data in the ISPE Evaluation for Workshops beginning with the 2022-2023 school year. Using the Spring 2022 Academic Return on Investment, or ROI, analysis, refine the district-wide multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS, framework to integrate, align, and organize a continuum of academic behavioral and social-emotional support in each school. Demonstrate an increased ROI each spring through 2025. And it's important to note here that the Academic Return on Investment analysis is provided by Education Consulting Research Analytics, or ECRA Group. The next three action steps for the student achievement goal are to decrease the performance gap for identified student subgroups and the all-student population as evidenced by the IAR results on the Fall 2022 School Report Card and each Fall Report Card through 2025. Using Spring 2022 as a baseline, elevate student college and career readiness as evidenced by the increased percentage of District 25 students participating in Ninth Grade Advanced Placement, or AP, coursework each spring through 2025. And finally, using the Five Essentials Survey 2022 Administration as a baseline, demonstrate increased student satisfaction with the engagement level of their instruction each year through 2025. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Les Wicky to talk about the learning environment goal. The learning environment goal is to cultivate a healthy climate and culture that creates conditions and supports to meet the needs of all learners. The strategies that need attention to achieve this goal at a higher level are: address the growing social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students, families, and staff, and foster a sense of belonging, mutual understanding, and competence to address diversity, equity, social justice, racism, and inclusion in our everyday practices. As Dr. Fitzpatrick stated, the learning action team also included staff and community members, and we met multiple times during the fall. And the team highlighted the following four items that they want the district to focus on. One, to develop a welcome new families program, promote safety and equity for all, increase the continuity of programming and resource allocations across buildings, and promote all students being educated in their home schools. This slide provides the staff action steps, or the do, steps for this goal. And this is, these are the steps the staff will work on to accomplish this. Increase the capacity of all staff to embedded social-emotional learning into instruction across content areas and proactively respond to student needs, as evidenced by achieving 100% teacher professional development participation rates and 100% meet or exceeds evaluation feedback data on the ISPE Evaluation for Workshop Form, beginning with the 22-23 school year. Utilize the 2022 DESA Assessment as a baseline to determine social, emotional, and mental health needs of students, readminister at least annual to, annually to demonstrate the decreasing need as the implementation of ruler increases, and to develop and refine processes that ensure a culture of belonging to address diversity, equity, and inclusion as measured by a newly created 2022 Student and Staff DEI survey results and participation data and readminister each winter through 2025. And as you already know, we spoke about this last meeting. In the fall of 2022, NSSO will conduct an audit of District 25's programming for special education to include: satisfaction surveys of families of students with IEPs, the extent to which District 25 is educating students in the least restrictive environment in students' home schools, the extent to which District 25 is utilizing inclusive practices across all schools, is District 25 including parents in the decision-making process for determining educational placements of students with IEPs, does District 25 implement an appropriate process for determining special education eligibility, and also how does District 25 compare to area districts with implementing inclusive practices? Will utilize the NSSO audit data to determine changes needed to increase family satisfaction of inclusive practices as demonstrated on annual satisfaction survey given to families of students with IEPs? And next, at this point, Dr. Ooh, Stacy.
I got my own.
You have a mic, okay. The stewardship of resources goal is to demonstrate stewardship by allocating resources effectively and equitably. Strategies that need attention to achieve this goal are to address the time, space, and aging facilities to ensure an optimal learning and teaching environment and to explore and develop new financial strategies to respond to the changing nature of school funding and projections to continue to offer equitable, high-quality programs and services to our students and families. The stewardship of Resources Action Team came up with four strategies, options to work towards. They encouraged extending the use of our debt service extension base to fund our capital projects, not continue to pay for them out of operating funds, to ensure that investments we make are looking forward, not just replacing what we have when it comes to technology, furniture, and building improvements, to consider return on investment when making financial decisions in terms of our cost versus the academic impact, what experiences are kids getting or losing, are, do our staff get support and feel supported, and what is the initial investment versus the long-term cost? And to allocate resources to allow for diversity and opportunities to address the spectrum of student needs, not just focus on the low achievers or the high achievers or certain groups. In terms of the doing action steps that we will begin, utilize the Spring 2022 ECRA process for determining ROI on instructional programs such as EL Special Ed Intervention, Advanced Math, and Advanced Reading. Develop a list of priorities for programs and services in terms of where to direct the investment of financial resources. Survey our stakeholders regarding student needs that aren't being allocated resources. Develop a dashboard for the district website on key financial indicators and work with our departments on resource needs and reallocations. Continuing to bring recommendations to the board for consideration on any new resource investments that can't be incorporated into the existing budget. Next, to measure current technology and furniture throughout the district and suggest a plan for updating both. Surveying our stakeholders regarding one-to-one technology, the use versus the impact, and determine the percent of technology and furniture that is approaching end of life. We'll maintain a fund balance to next-year expenditure ratio of between 40 and 60%. We'll create a document that shows each goal and how the stewardship area supports each goal so as the other strategic action teams bring forward needs of resources for their areas. And then develop a plan to fund capital projects long-term, including maintaining our de-sub tax rate at the current level beyond 2031.
All right, the first slide shows the high-quality staff goal. As a reminder to the board, the high-quality staff goal for the district is to attract, develop, and retain diverse, high-quality, innovative employees. Strategies that are needed to achieve and give attention to this goal at a higher level are to improve policies, procedures, and practices with our employees to enhance internal relationships, trust, respect, commitment, collaboration, communication, and satisfaction, and refine and extend data collection, analysis, progress monitoring, and reporting to promote continuous improvement at all levels of the system. This next slide shows the outcome of the High Quality Staff Action Team that included staff and community members and met multiple times during the fall. Also, a reminder to the board that the team highlighted the following items that they want the district to focus on. Notice that there are five items, but the first one is really a task that they want all of the goals to be SMART goals. So there's really four items below number one that will need specific attention. So number one is just define a high-quality staff goal statement to attract, develop, and retain diverse, high-quality, innovative employees as a SMART goal, which we will do in the next four points. Number two, develop an inclusive culture focusing on staff development. Number three, leadership training on building inclusive cultures and staff choice and professional development opportunities. Number four, incorporate inclusive staff behavior assessment through performance evaluations. And number five, competitive salaries and incentives to attract and retain our high-quality staff. And this next slide, pulling it all together, taking those action team items and making them now steps for us to actually measure and hopefully have a significant impact on. So the action team input number three from the previous slide states, "Leadership Training on Building Inclusive Cultures and Staff Choice and Professional Development Opportunities", is connected to this action step number one, where the goal is to increase the percentage of employees who exhibit higher satisfaction and engagement using the HUMANX survey. The next action item relates to the input from the action team on number five, the previous page, where their request is incentives to attract and retain high-quality staff, which is connected to this action step, where the goal is to implement a hiring committee audit to increase the diversity of those participating on the selection committee, which will increase the involvement of a more diverse group of staff, demonstrating a more inclusive culture, which we anticipate will help retain the diverse staff we already have on our District 25 staff by directly including their input on the future hiring of staff members, and we anticipate attracting more high-quality, diverse staff who will see a more inclusive environment when they interact with the staff during the hiring process. The next bullet is related to the action team item number four on the previous slide, stating incorporate inclusive staff behavior assessment through performance evaluations. This one is connected to action item number three here, where the goal is to increase the number of face-to-face connections between supervisors and direct reports focused on student achievement. And the last bullet point relates to action team item number two on the previous slide, to develop an inclusive culture focusing on staff development. This action is related to the staff developing their leadership and collaboration skills to increase an inclusive culture. I will now turn it over to Dr. Bine to talk about the family and community goal.
Thanks, Brian. All right, fifth goal, number five of five. As a reminder, the family and community goal is to strengthen family and community relationships to enhance learning, teaching, and partnerships. And the strategies that will need attention include: improve classroom, school, and district connections, collaboration, and communication with our families and community to enhance our external relationships, trust, respect, commitment, engagement, and satisfaction, and to develop effective partnerships with the community, with community agencies, higher education, and District 214. Our family and community action team, like the others, was very engaged. We had staff members, parents, community members from different community organizations that came together on this group. And the input that they wanted to make sure they shared for us to focus on as we move forward is to create regular and authentic partnerships for wraparound supports for our students, to create space for people across all schools to share their cultures, to provide community-level support for mental health, to educate everyone about major current events and news so that when students go home, their parents can share information with them, knowing what was shared in school. Can be similar with what's shared at home. And to establish parent learning groups under various categories of parent interest. So as we put these into action, the steps now that staff are working on are the following. We're working on administering a community survey so we can measure growth in positive responses using this spring as a baseline and then looking at winter of '23, winter of '24, and winter of '25. Basically wanting to find out if families feel connected to their school, to their district, and to the entire community. And to establish trust, respect, commitment, engagement, and satisfaction levels of our community members. To also establish Community Services Committee for wraparound services and mental health. To also establish Community Services Committee for wraparound services and mental health support, in which we'll measure the referrals, participation, and family satisfaction from families who do utilize those supports. We're working to implement something of high interest to the action team, an annual community-wide event, measuring attendance and exit surveys of satisfaction, and at that community event, have a diversity, equity, and inclusion focus with some cultural connections, provide some parenting courses, and provide opportunities for students and families to engage in some fun activities. We will participate in the Village of Arlington Heights Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, which is just beginning, to design some community-wide programs and determine community-wide supports. We'll continue to participate in the Chamber of Commerce Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Weekly Group that we've been a part of, to discuss community-wide DEI needs from our businesses, as well as the impacts on District 25. And we will host our District 214 Education Career Pathway students for their clinical experiences, tracking the number of participants that utilize District 25 classes for those experiences. And finally, we'll establish community topics and current events communication tools, so again, things that are going on that our families and schools want to be connected on, as well as issues or activities that occur that are unique, making sure that we're communicating between home and school. We will look to distribute a communication tool quarterly, and then again additionally as unique situations arise. We'll include factual information, resources for parents, share with them how the schools are addressing the topic, so that they can connect with that at home, and then measure from a social media perspective how many families are opening those newsletters that we send, and we'll have a survey response for each topic that people can respond to. So, that's a lot of information. Again, just to kind of fill the board in, as a reminder, we are doing the Plan, Do, Study, Act process. We have begun to move into the do phase. We would like to fully jump in to the do phase after tonight, after we gather any additional board directives or questions, so that we can bring our initial data to each of our five action teams, probably late spring, since we're moving into the spring this year, to share with them what we've gathered at that point, and for them to review it and suggest any changes in how we move forward. We, of course, will expand on our timeline for reporting progress to the board and the community, providing information each step along the way. Are there any questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Rich.
Appreciate the staff doing all the work. I mean, this is a good culmination of a lot of activity here. I also appreciate a lot of the references to SMART goals. This is something that we've been talking about for some time. I guess when I look at the totality of this, one of the things that I struggle with when looking at this, and maybe if we go to, as an example, if you go to slide six. Oh, slide six. Oh, sorry. There you go, okay. One of the things I struggle with is maybe two points in these, and this is maybe a theme in a lot of these. What I'm missing out of this is understanding, what's the do, right? As you read these measures, it's great, you're going to measure it in the spring of '22, including those identified subgroups who meet or exceed expected growth, got it. What are you going to do to get us there, right? Maybe as another point, you're going to increase the return, demonstrate an increased ROI each spring through 2025. Great. What are you going to do to demonstrate that increase? What are the, what are you doing?
Yeah, and I think, I hear you, and my colleagues can jump in, but I think maybe some of our confusion as we talk about this from the administration and the board is that those are things that we do feel are staff-level pieces, right? All of the work that we're going to do, all the steps with professional development, all the working with teachers on instructional strategies, all of the making sure that our instruction, instructional programs are done with fidelity, our review of the progress monitoring, that's all stuff that we're used to in the past, being that staff-level work, and then bringing the outcomes and the measurements and the broader goals to the board. So, that's where I think where our struggle is, as we've continued to talk about this, is how much, again, and maybe the board can help us there, how much more do you want us to articulate on our day-to-day work that we do at our level to achieve these?
I don't disagree with that in concept, but you know, if we look, as an example, we look at the measures for the financial, they're specific do's. You're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. So, you know, I'm okay either way, I'm just wondering to make sure that as we're looking through this, we understand, I mean, just kind of working through that. And I'll open up to the board and get their input. The other maybe concern, going back to slide six, and again, it's the same kind of theme throughout these, is we use words such as increase. So, in my mind, what is increase? What's the goal? You know, again, to be specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound, is you've got to have a number there, right? Is it, are you planning to increase it by 5%? That would be an increase. Same thing as .000001. I just, you know, that's an increase.
Yeah, and I think we feel-
Is that what we want-
Thank you, sorry.
-out of all this, or are we looking more for, what would we say is success? Again, after four years, are we going to say, hey, .000001 is a success? I don't know. Because we said it's increase.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Rich. I think we feel that we need to see the baseline information, and then use that to determine, for example, student growth on MAP, like the board is aware of. NWEA will give us those projections on what is significant increase. The return on investment information, and the board will get a presentation from ECR, I believe in May, both on student achievement, student growth, and return on investment. That data system that we're using will provide projections for what is significant increase. So, we can come back to the board with, here is the number that we're looking for, but we want to start with what that baseline is before we determine that.
And so, Lori, so you'll use that in all the measures then? Because you're using ECR as one, but then in all the measures, you're going to come back to us in the spring, let's say, because most of those are spring measures, with saying, here's what we're going to increase. Okay?
Thank you.
It's like we did with the MAP, where we say, here's the projected growth, and here's the actual growth.
Great. So, I wanted to start with saying, there's some, a lot of stuff in here I really appreciate. It's so wonderful to see, you know, when you're going through this process, and being on that action team, like, you're developing all these high-level concepts and trying to bring them down to earth, and to see it now really in black and white is very satisfying. There's a lot of concrete measures here, targeted, specific stuff. I want to pick up on Rich's, your initial point, a little bit, and offer a perspective. I saw some of the same thing throughout, where I was just wishing for, I understood really clear what, how something was going to be measured, and what tool we're going to use to measure it. And as an educator, I can relate to that. I just went through evaluation this year, and I'm saying this, I know all the people sitting here, a lot of you know, but I'll just say for, you know, I had to make goals, and I'd say, here's how I'm going to measure them. So, I understand that side, and I think sitting here, I do have a desire to hear at least at a high level, a little bit about the do. And you highlighted some examples. I had the learning environment, slide 10, slide 11, had some really, okay, this is how we're going to do it. And I think if it was all one way or all the other, maybe I wouldn't have made a comment, but now, when I was reading it, I'm like, but I see it here, I would love to see it here, and again, at the high level, right? Not when the schedule of the professional development is, not at all. So, that's just maybe amplifying what Rich was saying. If I could go on to another comment and ask a question about slide seven, with the student achievement, and in there, and I'd asked this question earlier, so my colleagues maybe have already saw the response, where it mentions using the Advanced Placement as a measure for evaluating how are our students ready for college and career. And in my question, and again, the board may have seen it, I shared an article, so I'm going to riff off that just for a second, I'm not interested in changing what's there, but my concern is using that as the sole measure of what we're interested in measuring there, college and career readiness. And so, the thing with AP courses, it's really tough, and this is research-based, it's tough to establish causation, that if you take an AP course, you will be successful in college. You may, but it may be because you went to a great school. It may be because you have the support system you need. So, I have no problem with keeping it there, but I'm wondering, Dr. Bynne, if we can find a measure that would broaden our view, because we should acknowledge that there's more than one path to success, right? I mean, there's, an AP course is not the only way, and so is there a richer way to go after that? It's just a suggestion, and again, I'd be interested, that's what I'm interested in seeing, you know, when I read that. And so, maybe I'll leave it at that, and defer to my colleagues if you have comments on that.
I was just going to say, we can definitely connect with District 214. They have a very large picture of college and career readiness for their students, and look at that and how that might apply for us.
All right. Aneeshah.
Dr. Bynne, if we could jump to slide 21 for a second, before I start kind of sharing about, you know, what I'm seeing there, I want to say, as a board, we're so proud of the strategic plan to the point that, and the work that the administration is doing, that we actually put in a proposal to the Illinois Association of School Boards Conference to present the strategic plan, the equity-focused nature of it. So, that just got presented a couple of weeks ago, and a couple of us, and hopefully Dr. Kay will be joining us, and Dr. Bynne is helping us through that presentation as well, so that everybody can kind of hear the work that we're doing here in District 25. So, we're excited about that. And the family and community partnerships with Dr. Bynne, I think it's great that the equity-focused work that we're doing has such a large community focus to it, because the only way that we can help our community through this is having those connections with the larger community, and really having that Jedi lens, right, which we call making sure that we have justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion lens always in everything that we do, and today I really heard that, that in every goal that you talked about, because it's in our mission statement, in our vision, in our values, everything that you folks talked about today, you had that lens on, and it was really great to see, and that came out in the steps and the actions for me. The one point of suggestion, and or a question I have for you, Dr. Bynne, is, you know, there's the connections with the chamber, the village, that's awesome, and this, I was wondering with District 214, because District 214 has a director of diversity, and they've been doing amazing work throughout the community on having courageous conversations, built by a scholar called Singleton, and having them throughout, because for us to do the work inside the schools, we really have to do this work outside the schools as well. So, I wonder having that meeting would be helpful to see how can we collaborate on that front as well.
Anything else?
Mr. President, I just wanted to finish. I wanted to make sure I circle back and make this comment, you know, as we talk about, you know, maybe we'd like to see a little more of this, or a little tweak here, I want to express, and I think many of us, all of us would agree at this table, we have a lot of trust and faith in all of you that presented this evening, and bringing this to life. What I heard tonight is just looking for a little more clarification in what's on the print on the page, but a lot of faith in what you guys do.
All right, thank you.
I psyched you out, sorry. I have one question. As far as, you know, Dr. Lozwicki, and when you presented along with Dr. Fritz-Petric, you had talked about one of the measures was going to be that 100% attendance at the workshops and 100% satisfaction. I was wondering what happens when, once the teachers have left the professional development, how do you guys circle back to know that whatever they learned at the training is something that they're implementing in the classrooms, and how do you get that feedback back? I was wondering.
On completing the professional development, and then depending on the nature of the professional development, there might be subsequent experiences where maybe there's observations in classrooms, maybe there's opportunities for staff to observe each other, maybe there's a follow-up professional development to come back into the conversation to talk about, okay, now that you've implemented, what have you learned, what do you want to refine? So, there's a couple of different ways, depending on the topic of the professional development, to kind of follow up and make sure that there's, you know, it's, we're sustaining our efforts to improve in whatever the topic is.
All right, thank you. Moving on to board meeting-
I just had one question, really, just to understand. I understand we talk about that college readiness, right? But I really want to make sure, and I think career is the most important, that I wanted to point out, like, I get colleges probably a lot of people's ideals, but there's going to be a lot of kids that are going through here that don't go to college, and I think it's important that we just don't measure the college piece, right? I think for me, right, there's kid, I mean, HVAC guys, there's guys who go to technical school, there's, I think it's important that we really keep that focus there, that still got to be able to do math to go to HVAC school, you still got to do that. So, I think, I think your point, Greg, I just want to make sure we're focused on all that too, because career is important just as much as college, so to speak.
All right, thank you. Moving on, board meeting structure. Thank you for stepping up. Dr. Bynne?
Thank you. Mr. Harris, you can take that presentation down. Thank you. Okay, the next item we have is about board meeting structure. It was about a year ago that the board discussed a variety of elements related to the structure of board meetings, and I thought it was time to revisit a few of those, and some of you have expressed an interest in revisiting a few of those. So, the first one, I wanted some board input into our meeting dates for next year, 2022 to 2023, because it will be the second April meeting that the board would approve dates for the future. So, to prepare for that, Mrs. O'Brien and I have been working with District 214 to make sure that we don't conflict with their board meeting dates. Theirs are on Thursdays, and also trying to make sure we don't conflict with the Village of Arlington Heights trustee meetings, which are on Mondays. There are some dates, as you know, that do have legal requirements in terms of the number of days they must be away from other meetings, and the number of days before we need to publish things in the paper, especially related to the tax levy, budget approval, board elections, et cetera. But related to making all that work, I was interested in wondering, does the board prefer that we try to keep meetings on Thursdays, but just try to stay away from District 214 meetings where we can, knowing that some dates need some legal timelines? Or are you willing to switch to Tuesdays or Wednesdays, and then there's not a conflict with District 214 nor the village?
Yes, Aneeshah.
I, if it could stay uniform, that would be best, because then if we have other obligations as far as classes or work meetings or something, then we know that we just block out Thursdays, because if it switches around, then it's tough.
Yeah, with the, I think a famous radio personality once said, you miss a little, miss a lot, and it's, if you miss one meeting a month, that's huge. So, to keep it consistent is-
Yeah, I think the day of the week is consistency is pretty important.
But I think to that end, I have no issue with being a Tuesday or Wednesday, I mean, we're scheduling, trying to schedule something a year out, so. But I think to that end, I have no issue with being a Tuesday or Wednesday, I mean, we're scheduling, trying to schedule something a year out, so.
Wednesday would be potentially conflicting with N S S E O, and I will offer that I teach on Wednesday nights, and I would not be available.
Reminding us about N S S E O.
So Wednesday it is.
Yeah. So Tuesdays, is there any reason we shouldn't look at Tuesdays being the date for next year? Taco Tuesday?
We could call it Thomas Tuesday.
Okay.
For me, for me, it just, I don't have a direct conflict, it just depends how early we're starting, you know, so I, I teach later that day. So I'm just interested in hearing how early we might start.
Does a 7:00 PM start for the regular meeting continue to be okay for everybody? All right, so we will put a list of dates to recommend to you on Tuesdays, beginning at 7:00. And again, the board will ultimately approve those dates, but we'll start with that, thank you. And that kind of included the board meeting times. The board had some beginning conversations about the length of meetings, talking about did the board want to include start and end times? Some districts have suggested kind of, they communicate like you did last time of let's try to be done by 10 o'clock. I don't know a district that has it set in their rules that we must be done by 10 o'clock. But really, that's up, the board could do that if you'd like to have a hard stop time as well.
Mr. President? Yeah, I'd like to suggest that we set a great example that evening and handled it. And if we could continue that kind of atmosphere and understanding, I think that would be productive for us.
So you want to do it on a case-by-case, or?
Yeah, absolutely, versus a, versus a hard and fast in a policy. Yeah, Mr. President, I was just gonna say, I said it somewhat in jest, but in reality, I mean, absolute hard stop at the, at the calendar date. No more after midnight meetings would be my, whether we have to put that in writing or not, or we just got a gentleman's agreement, you know? But I think an earmark time, to your point, Greg, is, I don't think we need to put it in writing, but I think, you know, yeah, I think, try to stick to, you know, a guideline would be good.
I think too, just being cognizant of our own, we have a list of questions that we've asked previous, and I don't think it's a mystery that those are answered to us. Maybe limit the questions if we know that we've already asked it, rather than re-asking it in public session, just to be cognizant of our own time, so we, we're not pushing it to where we're going to have to make that uncomfortable decision of, hey, we need to knock this off.
I would say, because we tend to have our boundaries, that we need to set the boundary, instead of saying leaving it to that, just because then we're not stuck, like, I'd rather set the boundary and say it's 11 o'clock, just using that as an example. And then that way, from a perspective, we know at 10:30, we've set the boundary to 11, and there's six more items on the thing. We don't have to continue, because if we say we do the gentleman's agreement, but, you know, I just, and to us, then, then, I think also from a staff perspective, they can prepare accordingly, like, okay, based on this, we predict this is going to be a 30-minute conversation. And we know some, they predict 30, and it ends up being two hours. So, you know, I think if we would, my proposal would be put 11 o'clock on it, or pick a time, I'm just throwing out 11. And then that's the time it's going to end, and if we have to move to the next one, we do, but that way, we are all cognizant of the time, we're cognizant of that. Because I would prefer to do that than saying, I think most meetings will be quick, but the reality is there's always going to be that exception, but at least we know exactly the time that we anticipate to end.
Yeah, thank you, Chad. To your point, we used to have time limits on each, each item. Maybe we revisit that to where each item is expected to last, you know, 10 minutes, five minutes, three minutes, whatever. And that way, we're kind of not setting a hard time, but setting a, an expectation of what, what it looks like.
Mr. President?
Yes, Gina.
I think if we, we should do, if we're going to do something, we should do something a little bit more formal than gentleman's agreement, simply from the perspective of the fact that we have our community that comes with the anticipation or intention of, of hearing a particular topic. So maybe there needs to be flexibility based on the priority of the schedule, and action items come first, or something to that nature, just from a perspective of ensuring that the community involvement versus somebody coming and sitting here for two, three, four hours, and then finding out that their topic won't even be discussed, and it's been postponed. Something to consider.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I'll agree with what Gina said, name what Brian and Chad were saying, having some kind of, definitely not midnight. Like, I feel like you don't get the best board member out here, as far as our decision-making may waver, because before the open, we're in close, and sometimes those close are longer, and so I, I would venture to say, like, and we're working, right? So 10:30, 11:00 max, because otherwise, it's really hard. And then definitely having, being cognizant of our own, kind of evaluating ourselves, but then making sure that folks aren't coming here and being disappointed.
Right, and I would also throw in, we do go to close sometimes after the fact. So I think if you set the time at 10:30, whatever, I mean, I'm not throwing out a time, but ideally, then we know what's going to be from this to 10:30, and then we can go to close, and then we can, because we have to go back into, right. It, it allows us to really just focus on the opportunity versus we've gone to close at midnight, and we're all, you know, kind of tired and want to go home, but the reality of it is, I think, I think I would agree with Gina from a 10:30 perspective, or whatever, pick a time, but just that's what I would propose.
Okay, so I've heard two different, you know, case-by-case, and also a hard, a hard time. Should we, is a straw poll, or just a? How many, yes?
I was gonna say, personally, as I think through, I'm not necessarily a fan of a hard time versus a targeted time, but maybe that's because of the agenda piece, right? Because, but I like the suggestion of maybe we move the action items more toward the top, and therefore, if something does get pushed, we're not making that last-minute decision, you know, oh, hey, we have to make a decision, but we still have X amount of time. So a targeted maybe time would be good, but if the action items are upfront, then maybe a hard would work. So it's maybe a, it's a twofold type of piece there. The other part about, you know, I think during planning during the agenda, it's good to think about a topic, you know, especially being presented and discussion is good to have that in terms of planning. I think adding that onto the agenda, I think, is, is not necessarily, you know, appropriate, because then it may limit, or it may subconsciously limit a potential discussion topic, or discussion need on a particular topic. But planning, absolutely, you think, you look at an item and say, yeah, that's probably going to take five minutes, 10 minutes, and it still may take two hours, based on what we all want to talk about, so, I mean, my, my thought.
We could also limit the number and the duration, any one board member gets to ask questions. What does everybody think of that?
Thumbs? Should we go around the, around the table here, the hard time, or, or open-ended?
Well, I don't want open-ended.
No, I mean.
I like to use the idea of moving action to the front.
How would that, how would that affect the, the agenda, the structure, yeah, exactly, the structure of the agenda where? The superintendent and?
And it's not always the action items that the audience is even coming for too, right? A lot of times they're coming to hear the discussion as well, but, and we can definitely do that, we could, but yeah, then you're basically doing all the department action items, then coming back to departments to do.
So taking into account what I've heard around the table, I'll throw out a suggestion, and then you can, you know, bet it or about, so how about a goal of 10, but a hard out at 11?
I think, ugh, I think midnight was, that's pushing it, yeah.
Well, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about there could be closed afterwards, that's why.
Yeah, that's, that works. Even that's pushing it, but yeah, that's.
Does the board want to try it a few meetings, see how it feels? We can see if we're setting the agenda with the same amount of time that the board made.
All right.
Well, we could try, you know, we could try it for the rest of this year, and as we plan for 22, 23, have a sense of if that's working.
All right, sounds good. Is anybody opposed to that? All right, so I think moving forward, that will be our, our goal.
Thank you. The next item is electronic public comments. The board originally initiated the opportunity for people to submit comments electronically due to pandemic restrictions in attendance, or because of remote meetings. The board has been holding your meetings in person for a couple of years consistently, and we've had more than enough seats for attendees as well. Each meeting does have a community input section at the beginning of the agenda, and the board also added one towards the end of the agenda. So staff is wondering, is the board ready to return to having public comments in person moving forward and not utilizing the online public comments? The public, of course, still has the access to the board through email, and so that would, of course, be available moving forward.
So I guess I have a question from a legal perspective more. If we allow public to make comments, because we're, we're, you know, we made the decision to broadcast this, and somebody could see it, and want to still make a comment potentially, but not send a direct email, do we have to read those comments? I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding, what is the obligation of us, or is it just, we're saying we're going to allow the comments to still come in? We can read them, see them, but we're not going to actually read them during the normal public comments time? I think there's a difference in how we structure that.
Maybe they're added into the record.
Well, they're added to the record for us, and we read them, and I know we look at them, but I just don't know, to your point, Dr. Byrne, that we need to read them out loud. But I guess, I'm just making sure, because I don't know if that's the legal guidance that we can do, I don't know what that is.
I have to double-check that, to be honest with you. I have to double-check that.
All right, so we'll research that and come back.
Okay.
And then one more?
And one more is a board policy committee. I think, Anisha, you brought this up last time, expressing an interest in revisiting this idea. We did talk about this a year or so ago, and I believe, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, that the interest is in actually having three members of the board assigned to a policy committee. They would meet to review policies in more detail prior to those being brought to the board. If we utilize that structure, we would communicate that those are official meetings, because there'd be three board members, that they're open to the public, of course, additional board members could attend if they wanted. And then if we use that format, we also would need to understand from the full board, do you still want policies then come, to come to the board for first reading and second reading? In most districts, when they have a policy committee, that's the first reading group. They make the edits and suggestions, and then bring them to the full board for the second reading, but it doesn't have to be. It could be an additional third step. And just a reminder that those meetings would require attendance by our assistant superintendents, as they're responsible for the reviewing those policies related to their departments. Therefore, so just be aware, we need to organize schedules so that it fits the board members who would be on that committee and the staff who would need to be there as well.
And just kind of referring to our other topic on this, that's going to probably another night for, for a meeting, correct?
A night or daytime, whatever would be, but yeah, if, if board members are, many of you, most of you have daytime commitments, then what you're asking is that the staff does another night, so we would try to align that in a way where they're maybe not coming an additional night than something else they already need to be here for.
So I'll kind of talk a little bit about why I came up with this idea, and kind of looking at other boards and participating in I A S B, I learned from board colleagues that many of these districts have these policy committees. And if we look at last time's agenda, as a board, we had 52 policies to look at in one goal, 52 now. And we had from Friday, and of course, that was that first reading, the second reading, but 52 policies and as a, as a doctoral candidate in policies, it's, that's a lot of, right, that's a lot of work to go through, and we may not be giving it justice when we're doing that so in a closed timeframe. And so these policies, the policy committee, it wouldn't be meeting every month or anything. I believe it would be meeting about four times a year, correct?
We could determine that together.
Right, and so when we break it up, and I, I wanted to hear from, from my colleagues to see if there were other folks who would be interested. And again, we could try this to say, if we adopted this policy committee and went that way, would it help us kind of be more rigorous in looking at these policies? And especially when policies is the work, is the fundamental work of our board, and then in, also in our strategic plan, and having that lens and kind of looking through everything, that we try it and see if it works better for us, and that we're more rigorous about these, scoping out these policies before we adopt it. And, and of course, in order to do that, I would like to see if there were other members interested in serving on a policy committee. And I believe there wouldn't be more than four meetings a year. And I, I for one will say that I'd be interested in serving on that committee.
Mr. President, so though it's sometimes I'm maybe not a fan of additional meetings, I, I reflect on that one of a board's primary responsibilities direct the district through policy. And so ensuring that we have not only reviewed the policies, understand what changes are needed, and then what are the changes that are needed unique to our district or our community, I think, is, is one of the, the sole foundational needs that we have, or responsibilities that we have. So I personally would be supportive of a committee, just to review, you know, that has that type of activity, that does those, and then that way, we wouldn't necessarily need a second, or I'm sorry, a first reading with the entire board, because that would really be the responsibility of that committee. And in that committee, you know, talking to the members as we normally do to say, hey, this is what we're thinking, where you guys at, and stuff like that. So I'm, I'm supportive of it.
Mr. President? Greg, I'll just amplify my colleague's comments and add that what I like about the suggestion of a three-person, and though it is a now a public notification and all that, what I like about it, it does allow flexibility for us, because more than three could attend, and there's an additional layer of transparency then for our public. I think that's good, when we're talking about, you know, these are foundational things for us as a board. And then finally, just offloading those in-depth discussion off this, I mean, just, it's, it's timely. We just talked about how long our meetings are going to be, so, and, and I would say I'd be interested in serving as well.
Chad?
Chad.
His, his finger is ready to push.
No, we already have three, so that's good. But, but the good thing, well, the good thing about a committee of the whole is that it could be three people on the policy committee, but as many board members, because it's a, it's broadcast, and as many board members could attend, because it is a committee of the whole. And then again, the beauty of it would be that, say if something comes up and we're, whoever decides to come, we just, we're discussing this policy, at that second reading, it would be our responsibility also to, to not, not to highlight all the policies, but to say, hey, we struggled with this one, and we gave it a lot more thought, so to highlight it for the rest of the board.
So I, the only reservation of all of it I have is not our time, but I also want to respect the time of our assistant superintendents. And I think saying, I get it, we want to volunteer four times, fine, but I guess from my perspective, like, I want to make sure that we're adding on significant amount of potential timeline for them, and that's, right? So that we come to a meeting, they're going to hear things, and they're going to be like, okay, do I make changes? And I just, I fear that that could create more confusion for people, just, and I want to make sure we're taking their consideration, because, you know, that's an important part of them having to show up and participate and do this. And our meetings go along already, and they come here, and we do committee meetings, or they show up. So I just want to make sure that, like, we get full input from everybody, but that they're, I mean, I'm not saying, I would like to make sure that they're bought in, because I want to make sure it's a really, a lot of commitment on their point, right?
I think maybe to your point, it's where we become flexible to work around.
Right, I mean, I just, and I just want to make sure, like, if we're going to do this, then it's not a set schedule. It may be around their schedule as opposed to ours, and I think that's a part that you're going to have to be flexible with, because, right, like, make it school hours, make it sometime during the day, because, you know, it's nice that they come here and we get to visit them, and they get to go away from their families for a couple of hours, I'm sure everybody loves that, like I do. But no, I'm just kidding. But the reality of it is, I just think we need to be respectful of their time, so.
Do this to get out of doing the dishes, huh?
I'm sure we can work that out, thank you.
Moving on, there's one more for the retirement reception?
Just FYI, we'll be moving the location of the May 23 meeting over to South Middle School, because we will have our retiree reception. Our retirees are invited to bring family and friends with them on that night when the board celebrates them. So we'll remind you again, and we'll make sure our community is aware of that, but that meeting will be held at South Middle School instead of here.
Thank you. Moving on, we have the academy program review, and Dr. Byrne continuing.
Thank you. So the board has kind of. So the board has kind of some data that we collected. We surveyed parents in the district whose children were invited to the academy program, meaning they were being excluded from school during the current 21-22 school year due to the pandemic. And so therefore, were invited to come to the remote academy during their dates of exclusion. And so we surveyed parents, and as the board can see, what grade levels children were from, and we asked parents, did you have your child attend the remote academy or no? Because some chose no. And as the board can see, about 80% did choose to attend and 20% did not. They shared their reasons, if they answered no, why they didn't. Most of those students were middle school students because they have access through Schoology to all of their assignments and things like that. But there were other, it does share with you other reasons as well. And then it asked families basically, how effective was the remote academy from a low of one to a high of five? And you can see those responses. And then also, how effective was the teacher? And you can see the trend of that is, you know, much higher. The teacher was effective. And in terms of the program being effective, that was kind of like a bell curve. What was the best part of the remote academy from the parent's perspective? What was the most challenging part of the academy? When it came to the best part of the academy, families tended to answer the teacher, the engagement of the child were some of the top answers. In terms of what was most challenging, people tended to answer the multi-grade levels in one class. So, you know, we had it organized right now. It's kind of a K2 class, a 3-5 class, et cetera. Some concerns with student engagement, a high response to that the assignments in the academy are too simple or too easy for a child. And we believe much of that, again, is kind of that because we have a grade range, a multi-grade range in a class. And then we said, we gave a question out that said, if we needed to have a remote academy in the future, again, we have it right now. It's a mandate from the state that if someone is excluded due to COVID, that we have a remote option for them. And so we asked parents' perspective, if we needed to have a remote option again in the future, what format would they prefer? We asked if they felt the district academy program would be appropriate as is. And without my glasses, I think we had about 15% say that it would be fine as is. We asked them if it would be appropriate if we changed it to single grades, so kept the same format, but had single grade classes. 25% chose that option. We asked them if students should be able to, instead of being in a separate remote class, to watch a live stream of their actual class, so not participate, but be able to zoom in or however, watch a live stream through some format. 22% chose that. And then we asked them if they would prefer that students be able to interact remotely with their actual classroom. So like last year, when we had the dual methods of teaching and kids that were remote could actually interact, and the largest percentage responded to that. 37% said that would be their choice from parents. We did get some information earlier this winter from our staff on how the current format of remote academy was working and if they felt it should change for this year. And at that point, the largest response was the remote academy really is the best format from a staff perspective at this time. And you'll remember, early in this winter, we had hundreds of cases, so kids in and out of the classroom every day. Right now, we're down to zero to single-digit number of cases, so it's a much different situation. So, you know, as we continue through the rest of this year, at this point, remote academy is still required by the state of Illinois. We don't know if that will carry over to next year. And even if it did, just like in 2021, we created one format. We looked at the pros and cons and the challenges and the successes of that. We changed the format for 21-22. If we're going to do something like this again in a future year, we'd want to look at what's the situation at that time? Again, what were the successes and the challenges of the current format of the one we did last year and then make a decision moving forward?
And thank to Dr. Bynum.
Mr. President? Dr. Bynum, 281 responses. How many total remote academies? So what percentage did we get as a response?
I don't know that I know that.
That's okay.
I have to double check.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, probably higher than 280-something that were invited, for sure.
I just wanted to see, like, what percentage of the attendance into remote academy or of the students who were excluded for whatever reason? What was, how many parents responded?
So we know, we know of these, the people who responded, we know what percentage of them chose not to have their child go to the academy. That's in here. But you're right, we don't, I don't know, was it 800 people that we surveyed? How many? I'll have to double check and get that information too. And some of those may have attended and may not have, but just didn't respond to the survey.
Right, understood. And then I did want to look at, when we're, when we did this, one of the elements we had asked was to get the teachers' feedback, not only the academy teachers' feedback, but also the receiving teacher of the student that was coming back.
And that's the, what I referenced was for all teachers, not the academy teachers, in that we got some information from them in January and that the largest percentage wanted for this year to continue the current format.
From, that came from the teachers?
Yes.
Got it.
Dr. Bynum, I was wondering, as far as the actual survey instrument, what was the decision in not having an open-ended question?
Really, when we've done open-ended questions before, it becomes so difficult to manage. And so we really wanted, at this point, to get some highlighted points and be able to categorize things and not have 280 individual comments. So that's why we didn't do it on this one.
And then, of course, I know that next year, when you're looking, if, hopefully, we will never, ever need this, but I know that one of the points you had said, 37%, the highest percent was that parents wanted to interact with the child. And I know that at every, with the teachers and the classroom, but I know that we always take teacher feedback as well and see what's doable and most feasible and most effective for teachers as well. And so we'll have to be cognizant not to go back to that situation where it was really hard for our teachers to do the zoom, you know, I think, now I forget what it was called. Like, how can we forget?
Yeah, the roomies and zoomies?
Yes, the roomies and zoomies. Yeah.
And again, there were families also at the time that had, at the time, said, we really should have created separate remote classes. There were neighboring districts that did have separate remote classes, so a class was all remote or was all in-person. And then for this year, they switched that. So there were successes and challenges of both models. And you're right, that's why after last year's, having that opportunity, we went, well, a lot of people weren't happy with that, let's change it for this year. So we'd have to reevaluate if we were going to do something moving forward.
And I totally understand, like, that interaction piece may be difficult, but I do see the results when they say, just, you know, kind of having that opportunity to have the window into the classroom. I can see that, but always wanting to be sure that our teachers, it's doable for our teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Bynum. Moving on, full-day kindergarten, this is an action item, so we're going to need a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education direct the superintendent to implement full-day kindergarten in District 25 by August 2024 by taking the following actions. Pursue voter approval to issue the needed school building bonds to cover related construction costs and five-year capital project costs. And build additional classroom space at Dryden, Greenbrier, Olive Mary Stitt, Patton, Westgate, and Windsor Elementary Schools so that full-day kindergarten can be provided at each student's home school. And collaborate with staff and families to recommend to the Board of Education the program design, instructional resources, personnel, and transportation details.
Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Anisha. Discussion?
So this is a culmination of the couple of years of work that the board has done to get to this point. And this specific motion does not set the amount of the resolution. I know the board wants to have, of course, some more conversation about that. But we believe this captures the board's discussion in moving forward with a tuition-free full-day kindergarten for the District 25 community, having that at families' home schools in our already K through fifth grade elementary schools. And with this motion would also then kick off the staff in working on actual program design and all the details related to that with our staff and with our families. And we would bring those pieces back to the board as we work through them.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns at this point?
Mr. President? One of the concerns, I think most of us are completely supportive of the full-day kindergarten, but I have just, you know, and that, as you've talked about, is representative, you know, roughly between $30 and $42 million in cost, somewhere within there, if I, you know, if we're just looking around rough numbers. What I have issues with, because most of the, what our discussions for the last X amount of time have all been around full-day kindergarten. And there's a little blurb in there that says, and the five-year capital project costs, which would then add on another $33 million onto this, which candidly is not related to full-day kindergarten. And so now we're saying it's $75 million. Again, when we were all here two weeks, yeah, a week and a half ago was $60 million. And now we're talking $75 million to go out to the folks. So my thought would be, if there is a need for the five-year capital projects, then I would move that we separate those two, because most of this motion, you know, three and a half, or three and nine-fifths of the motion have to do with full-day kindergarten. Let's, let's talk about that, because that might be the easier route. And then let's talk about five-year capital to see what, what is that about? Because you're lumping everything together, which really hasn't been explained. You're saying it's all full-day kindergarten, but it's really two distinctive issues or points.
Thank you. And I'll just say, we feel we've been very clear about the capital projects being a part of, if we're going to referendum, a part of that referendum question with full-day kindergarten. We've been providing that five-year capital projects amount to the board all along the way. So you're right, it's a small part in this motion, but we feel we've been very transparent about that being a part of this project moving forward. The board can, again, the board has a motion on the table to vote on, to vote up or to vote no. And, and then could, if you voted down this motion, could edit the motion and revote if you chose to do so.
I guess with that, I know in our previous meetings have all surfaced around full-day kindergarten. And to your point, you have shared, and I will agree, but we as a board have not talked about those capital costs as what and how would we do those in terms of, you know, how they should be presented, how they, how should we cover those? Because those are operational costs. So every year, you know, what was projected is $6.5 million of operational costs that we are now going to finance for the next five years. So that's where the 33 comes out of. I guess my question then is, if that's really the fundamental need, what happens in year six? It's still $6.5 million that we, we don't have a roadmap to say, here's why we need to cover that through a bond issue. And what's going to happen in year six? Are we going to go back to taxpayers and say, hey, we need another five years of $6.5 million? I don't know. We haven't collectively talked about that portion because our focus has been purely on full-day kindergarten. That, to my mind, would be, let's separate those two and have that discussion.
Mr. President?
Greg.
Respectfully, I'd like to disagree with my colleague. In preparing for this evening, I reviewed earlier discussions, both questions from the board and early discussions at this table that centered around, particularly when Ryan was up here talking about the five-year plan and what we would do about it. So I believe we have had the discussion and I would agree with Dr. Bynum's assertion that the staff has been transparent with us. But as far as what happens after five years, I have additional comments, but I would like to address that specific question because I believe a member of our staff has addressed that. So Stacy, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I believe you suggested to us at an earlier meeting that after five years, if, say, we went to referendum and it passed and we were able to take care of the five-year plan, that then we could go back to the debt service extension and leverage that to take care of further capital costs. I'm sure you could explain it much better, so I'll stop here.
I gave the, I did give the board one example showing that that would be a possibility to then leverage the debt service extension base to fund half of that $6 million and do a $9.8 million extension of the debt service extension base, not raising taxes additionally, but extending out that levy. And then that $9.8 million would cover three years. That's one option. You know, the $6 million is a number that I believe Ryan put out there to say, hey, if we want our facilities to be the facilities that, top-notch, taken care of, maintaining them the way that they absolutely should be maintained, that's what we should be spending. I don't know that in any way we ever said that's what we plan to spend every year going forward. We always look at, can we extend the life of something? This boiler, yeah, it should live, I don't know, 20 years of boiler, but maybe this one works fine, it's going to make it another five years. Well, then we're not going to spend that money at that time. So that's always something we're going to continue to look at. And, you know, we're to, to try to separate full-day kindergarten, that's going to add operating costs to the extent of at least $1.4 million, from then looking at funding capital projects through operating revenues, is getting really hard to try to detach those when they're competing against each other, honestly.
So since you brought it up, Rich, I think we, we can address that question. And Stacy, you started to go there. And even though I disagreed with your earlier comment, what I want to appreciate, and I know others at this table feel that way, about, you know, really tackling that $6 million. And I think that's a valid concern, whether it's $6 million or four, or the number we attach to it, right? We really want to live within our means, right? We want to minimize taxpayer impact and we want to have, I think that's where your question comes from, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but how do we reliably meet those needs in the future? We've had those discussions. We're trying to be forward-looking. So, but if we're not going to go to referendum, then we really have to answer the question of how we're going to do the, you know, how are we going to get that money? And what we can't default to is we can't kick this can down the road and then find ourselves in a place where we have to make program cuts. And I would like to remind my colleagues, we've had, we've flirted with this already in these discussions. I would like to remind you of the discussion about putting specials and resources in the hallway. And just that little one, that is kid stuff to what we're talking about, because that was to the tune, well, I don't remember the number. But if we're talking about $6 million a year that you want to pull out of, not you, but we want to pull out of the operating budget, well, man, get, get out the hatchet because we're going to be cutting quite a few programs. And the other thing to think about is, let's even say it's $3 million. I really want everyone to think about, do you believe that there's $3 million of fat in our budget at this point? Because if there is, we, we better take a hard look at what we're doing because we're not doing the taxpayer justice. I don't believe for an instant we do, that we have that much to cut. And that doesn't mean we can't be responsible, right? That doesn't mean we can't take a hard look at programs and, and make choices that are smart. But we're talking about funding capital projects. And Stacy, if I could ask, is there a dollar threshold when we consider something a capital project versus a maintenance project? project versus a maintenance project? I'm sure there's a judgment there, but is there literally, in a technical sense, that makes it a, is it a $15,000? It's okay if there isn't, but I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I mean, I defer to Ryan, but I do know that, from my perspective, a capital, something we consider a capital project is something that is not going to be required every single year. We're not going to replace a boiler every single year. We have nine schoolers, we're going to replace nine boilers, or if there's more than one at a school, 18 boilers across a number of years. But we cut our grass every year. That's maintenance of our property. That's not in capital projects, that's in operations fund. When we do it every year and it's part of normal everyday operations, that's what goes in Fund 20 from my perspective. And that was a conversation that the board had, not all of you board members were probably here at the time, because off the top of my head, I don't know when it went, but there was a point in time when, by school code, we were told, any projects you fund out of bonds, you now need to pay for out of Fund 60. We had historically paid for everything out of Fund 20. So at the time, when I was making that change, the board's conversation at that time was, well, let's put everything that's not normal operations out of Fund 20, let's put it in Fund 60, because then we know what our operating, true, regular, annual operations costs are to maintain our facilities versus the projects that are needed on a one-time basis at a school to put those into Fund 60 as considered capital projects. We can change that, but that change was made based on a conversation with the board.
So, I want to, again, align myself with the comment that we need to live within our means, and we need to be mindful with our spending. And we can even increase the amount that we might be able to designate toward these projects, but to, to walk away from this proposal that could provide security for the next five years for these projects, which we have all agreed that are essential, and then also tee us up for a longevity system for maintaining these projects in the future, but not discounting that maybe we do adjust our budget and maybe wouldn't need quite so much to go out of the debt service extension. We're not excluding those ideas. I just think it would be, we just have to be really careful here, because, like I started, there's, we have great programs, and we have families that really value that programs. And let's all remember, this isn't the building and grounds board meeting, this is the School Board of District 25. We're here to educate children, okay? And I know you all know that, but I just want to step back, because we, we get really in the weeds here about, and we have to with what's going on. So, and thank you, Ryan, I know you stepped up to answer my question, I, I want to maybe step away from my comments and leave this thought, because there's a lot of concern about the dollar amount, and maybe we're not there with that discussion, but I think because the $6 million is coming up, I want to offer a path forward. So if, if the board, and this is just one idea, and we can work on it, is uncomfortable with the 75 for any number of reasons, there, we, there wasn't a lot of energy to discuss this last time, but maybe there is today. Right now, we have a proposal and a dollar amount that's focused around a 15% cushion above the CASADA study. We could bring that back to 10%. That could take $6 million off. Now we're at 69. Let me go one step further. We could take another $6 million off and get closer to 60, not quite there, obviously, and now if we need more than, say, $63 million, and Stacy, maybe I'm going to come back to you, we take that out of fund balances if it's needed. So rather than going to referendum for a maximum amount and then rebate, or, you know, sending it back to the taxpayer, we start a little bit lower at a number that we could fund if needed out of fund balances. And it could be anywhere from 1 to 6 million, right? We don't know what that number is. And so now we're at 63, and I'm open to feedback, and from, especially from staff, Dr. Bynne, if you, if, if 75 was the number, I could get behind that, but I'm trying to offer a path forward for some of my colleagues at the table.
So, I'll just take this perspective. I do think we've been aware of the 30 million capital that, that's been here for a while. I think the question is, for me, is more the wording, right? Maybe I'm just getting wrapped up in 75 million, because when I read this, I'm struggling with, like, okay, if I'm talking to somebody in the community and they say $75 million, they're going to first focus as 100% on full-day kindergarten. And my struggle is if I say I'm putting $75 million into full-day kindergarten, we're going to get a no, right? I think the intention here is try to get a yes as much as possible. So my question is, can you split this up from a referendum? I'm just asking from a, I know people will say maybe probably not the wisest thing, but I'm asking, do you split it up and say, look, we understand, like, just, we just walked through that entire concept of, you know, what our strategic goal is with how we can do better additional funding for the projects that we need for capital, right? That was one of the initiatives that Stacy's working on. Do you put a referendum in there saying, look, we've got capital projects that we, we know we have to get done, right? But then the full-day kindergarten cost is breaking it out, because honestly, the voters got to understand that that 70, they can vote for both, reality, or they can say, listen, I'm okay, you've got to do the capital improvement, because to your point, Greg, they've got to, we've got to maintain our buildings, otherwise the life safety situation comes into play, right? And that's the thing that you guys are trying to prevent, is the, hey, you didn't plan well, so now instead of spending $6 million, you're spending 15, right? So, reality. So I think, to me, it's breaking it up in a different way, so that the voter understands what the cost of full-day kindergarten really is, what we're asking for, because we're trying to fund. And I think the biggest thing that I took out of reading a lot of this is, and really trying to get my head around this, is we talk about operating at a zero-sum budget, right? A zero-based budget, and the truth is, I think we haven't, I think we have been, but we have an excess that we've been taking out of, paying out of these past few years for these capital projects, correct? And then what we're doing is, we're actually just trying to refund that to maintain our 60, this 40 to 60% excess fund. That's really the intention of this, is to take that out so we can put it in there and so we can sit, because every time, what I remember, and I'm just trying to remember this, we try to make sure we have a 66%, because we never know when the taxes are going to come in from the state and, and the county, so that we don't default on any potential other issues down the path. So I think we just need to understand, I'm, I'm trying to put all in bigger picture to say, we, we have the money technically, but what you've always said is, if we spend it, we're going to run out in our, basically, emergency fund, so to speak, that if the taxes don't come, now we're putting ourselves at risk for other things, right? So that's really what we've been talking all this time, and I think framing it, and I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure we all understand the frame of it, because I agree with, with Rich from one perspective, when I see 75 million, and the conversation is, people are going to just associate that only with full-day kindergarten, and that's going to have a negative impact, just my perspective.
And if I could jump in, you know, the, the ballot language, the actual language on the ballot, right, does clarify for voters. I'll read a part of this. Shall the Board of Education of Arlington Heights District 25 improve the sites of, build and equip additions to, and alter, repair, and equip existing buildings, including without limitation, building classrooms for full-day kindergarten, and replacing windows, flooring, roofing, plumbing, electrical equipment, and HVAC systems? And issue bonds of said school district to the amount of 75 million for the purpose of paying the costs thereof. And then in our community forums and our education of the community, we will, just like we've done in all of the attachments at board meetings, break out the, here's the capital projects range of costs, here's the building for full-day kindergarten range of costs. So that'll be part of our responsibility in educating the community of, of how that 75 million breaks down.
Mr. President?
Yes, Gina.
So, when I look at this motion and I look at prioritizing our goal, the, the goal is to bring full-day kindergarten to our district. That has been the main point, the main topic of the discussion. I personally have a lot of angst over the capital project element and the number. However, I do believe that the community could speak. Now, if we put the whole boat out there and the community votes this down in referendum, we might have to go back and revisit and break these apart, because it is possible that through all of the community education and outreach, that, that one could be more of a vote anchor to prevent the other one from going through, and we would get that I am open to thinking about and keeping the priority and the focus on the full-day kindergarten and letting the community decide, but I will offer that I am very concerned at the number and the fact that that could limit our ability to get the favorable vote in June as a result.
Any other comments?
Mr. President, I, I tell you, you know, I, I kind of took away the same thing from the public opinion poll results, as far as with the questions that were asked and which entailed the capital project, it still showed high polling results and success rate as far as the community, from the poll results showing that, that it would still be a go, right? So I, even though I am concerned, I think maybe we look at it like this, we send the 75 million through June, let the community decide, and come June, they say, hey, no, this doesn't work, then come back with another number the next time. But based on the polling that was done, it sounds like the same, you know, the, the questions that were put out to the community included that other number, and the community was, the polls showed well.
I, I agree with you that the polling was, was favorable, but I believe the question was asked for 60 million in the, in the polling for that.
And it was a population of, sample population of 250 some odd people.
So, I mean, it's, it's a similar...
I wouldn't use the word "community" for this.
Yeah, it's, I mean, just the numbers that were returned and presented us by POS. It's, it asked the same, the same language, just the amount of $60 million for the, the purpose of pay and the costs.
Yeah, and Scott, as you mentioned, it had the same language, including the capital projects as well.
But yeah, I see the dollar a month, though, was different.
Yeah. You know, in thinking maybe where Greg was talking about, you know, what if we looked at lowering that number? I would, again, having experienced the build-out of the 2016, 2017, things of that nature, I think having that flex in the buildings is very, very important. That 85% type of capacity that we're looking at is extremely important, because one school will go up, one school will go down, one school will go sideways, you know, programs will add this, programs will add that, it gives us tremendous amount of flexibility. So if we were to look at lowering it, I'd say we'll take the, take that lowering on the capital side, for two reasons. One, you're already projecting that the, the cost is anywhere between 32 and 43 or 42. So there's some, there's some, you know, added space in there, right? We just don't know. We're hoping that it might come in a lower, it might come in somewhere within there. So there's some flex within there, yet we're asking for that total amount. But that would also then maybe set us up for really establishing a guide path earlier of, how are we going to get to a number? That's right, you know, we're, we're talking about six mil, I've heard $6 million, but really, when you do the math, it's $6.5 million, that's $500,000 more, right? There has to be a magic medium to say, how do we get to that number? And again, maybe it's not in three years, four years, maybe it's six years, maybe it's seven years, that we really have to look at how we're getting to a number that's appropriate that we can then fund going forward. You know, my fear is, when we're financing long-term, because again, we're talking about financing five-year costs across 20 years, right? You can only do that so often, otherwise you run into problems, right? This is what City of Chicago is finding out, this is what State of Illinois is finding out. You run into these fundamental problems by doing that. So if we need to go out there, because it's the right thing to do right now from where we are, great, let's make sure we're on a glide path of saying, here's the plan of we think by, in three years, whatever it is, three years, four years, six years, eight years, whatever, that we feel in some amount of time, we will be in a space where we can maintain our buildings to whatever level that's appropriate and be able to fund this without continually going back and saying, oh, we got to finance more, because at some point, again, if you're financing over 20 years, every five years, you're, you're never, you're going to be in a hole very quickly.
To your point, I, sorry, I have a question from, just more to Stacy. So I know, like, the reserve, right? And I know you talked about the 35, the $30 million for bringing reserve down to a percentage. I forget what presentation that was from, a few, January, right? Let's say we said we were going to be able to take 15 of that million out of the reserve and put the other 15, to your point, Greg, and say, so like, because I think 60 million is what was published in the paper, it's, I think the problem, like, we're, we're, we're going to face a PR problem here, let's just be realistic, right?
Right, we have to be careful, though, like, right, the paper publishing, we're not going to be able to control that.
Yeah, I can't control anything, agreed. But I, just saying from a PR perspective, that's all I'm trying to state, is that there's something out there that says something, and unfortunately, PR gets put into the way it does, so. But my major question is back to, if you took 15 million out of the reserve, what does that leave us at the percentage of the reserve for? Because I think you're trying to, you know, we're trying to maintain a 40 to 60% reserve, and if you, the full 30, I thought you said that took us into, like, the, I forgot, it was like...
22. Sorry. So in January...
Thank you.
In January, what I showed was if we continue to pay capital projects off operating funds, we would be at 22% reserves in five years. If we took 17.9 million and reduced it by 15, we'd be at 41% reserves in five years, but that does not anticipate the additional $1.4 million in operating costs for kindergarten.
Correct, correct.
So, we got to take that out as well.
Mr. President, to Stacy, I believe earlier, like, we, we had a discussion around the million or so we may receive every year from the, you're nodding, Dr. Bynne, help me with the language.
The refund recapture.
Thank you, thank you, the refund recapture. So we've had some discussions about that and how we might fund that.
I wanted to, you know, when Greg brought up an option, I wanted to hear, if Stacy could clarify the response to that, I think I may have missed it somewhere, like, what is your thought on what Greg had brought up about another, different way of solving this?
At the, at the end of the day, we can sell whatever level of bonds the board is comfortable with. I don't know if the concern is 75 million versus 60 million, or $300 a year to an average taxpayer versus 217, because they sound very different.
I think we're at $19 a month versus $25 a month, when you break it down that way, from 60 million to 75 million.
Okay. So, whatever, some of the concerns that we're facing, which, again, I think Ryan did a very good job, there's a range for the projects. When we put the 60 million out there, we had not designed the buildings at 85% capacity. So that added some costs. And then we looked at Westgate and the movement of programs and decided to spend that extra 10 million to keep that program there. So that's some of the rationale why the number is gone up from, and we're leaning towards that 42 million for the full-day kindergarten. We also know from our neighbors who did do a bond referendum to add full-day kindergarten that their construction costs, bids came in 25% higher than their budget because of inflation right now, and the ability to get materials and everything else. If, if we pass a referendum in June and we go to full design, by the time we start bidding and awarding projects, we're nine to 12 months from today. Is that, would you say that's fair? We think we incorporated those costs into the range, but I don't know that we incorporated 25% increases. So I, I worry about that as well. Ultimately, some of the conversations that this is based on were, we didn't want to make changes to current programs or change class sizes. We want to keep programs where they are. We don't want to be back here in three to five years having this conversation again. We don't want to be back here in three to five years having this conversation again. So for all of those reasons, as the, being in charge of finance, I'm recommending the 75 million. If the board wanted to look at selling 60 million in bonds, if the referendum passed first and hold off on 15 million until we know we needed it, absolutely. But I cannot say if we sell 60 million, then I cannot tell you, you won't be back here in five years from now facing a need for funding. I can't say you will, but I, I'm not comfortable that that would put you in a position, put all of us in a position, we wouldn't be having this conversation again in three to five years. And as a reminder for the board, if, if the community approves the referendum in June, the board, in fact, I see Elizabeth Hennessy here from Raymond James, thank you, Elizabeth, for coming by. Elizabeth will be coming to a future meeting to share with the board how bonds can be sell, sold, and what's the rate for the district? As Stacy mentioned, we're a very high-rated district financially, but what's the cost of the district if you sell the 75 million all at once? What's the cost if you sell 40 million and then wait for the others till we get down the road? So there'll be options on, do you sell it all at once? Do you space it out over a few years? And if we did sell it all at once and we came in in the lower end of our range, we'll have the ability to send that money back to the taxpayers in future tax collection years. So that's the other part, right? You were asking, we came up with the number based on the board interests and, and went for the upper estimated cost to make sure that we're covered, but that doesn't mean you have to sell all of that all at one time.
I have a clarification question, Dr. Biden. How, you know, to, to make sure that our quest, you know, our decisions are data-driven, does it make sense to run this poll again with the right number? And how, how long is a turnaround for a poll and then, and the cost attached to it? And then from a transparency PR piece, of course, this is a public meeting, that number is now out there, it's, it's a new number, and that community education piece will continue to happen.
Yeah, so again, the poll was done in February, right? With the information that we had in front of us in February, we took an average of the options to say, poll 60 million, right? And then since February, as we've discussed, we, the board has refined their interests and, and facilities format. If we were to go back and do another poll, it's about a $25,000 fee to do that. They can do a fairly quick turnaround, but again, in terms of getting on the June ballot, this board needs to take action by April 11th and submit that to the county clerk soon after. So I, I think it's probably unlikely that we could go out at this time.
Mr. President, I'd like to suggest that based on the discussion we're having, I think maybe we're ready to vote on this particular motion, and then we can address the, this following one, the resolution.
Yeah, I hear you, Greg, because this is more of the, the bigger picture than the weak side. So if there's nothing further, there's any, we'll start with you.
Yes.
So again, I am 100% supportive of a full-day kindergarten. I'm really struggling with this. I don't see a path forward from the, the board. I got to be a no at this point.
Yes.
Yes.
I haven't said a whole lot. I've been struggling with this, as we all have. You know, we're writing checks we don't have. It's a horrible economy. I personally have reservations about kindergarten as a whole, spending 40-plus million dollars for an hour and 10 minutes of instructional time for a five-year-old. And I don't know what the return on investment of that is, because our kids from District 25 tend to hit District 214 schools at a higher level than we already have part-time kindergarten. So I, I struggle with that. But at the end of the day, you know, I, I don't think we're put here for our own personal reasons. You know, I have my own personal financial reservations about spending a couple hundred dollars more to live in this community. I love the community. But I think what I, what I really think we're here to do is to provide the entire community, taxpayers and parents, the opportunity to review this and to decide. But, you know, if we were just talking about full-time kindergarten or capital expenses, I could probably get behind those separately, but together, I, I share the sentiment that Gina had. So I'm, I'm going to vote a reluctant yes, which sounds crazy, but I just wanted to put that out there.
So I am struggling. I have a lot of angst with both the number and the, the combining of the, of the, of the two elements. Ryan, you did a great, you've done a great job. Thank you for all of your effort and your hard work. I didn't necessarily have the impression that you were trying to keep our schools at a Bentley level, but, but I still appreciate the work, the work that, that you've put in and the time and, and energy. Dr. Biden, I think you did a really nice job explaining that if we didn't have to put all the bonds out at the same time, that, that that could be a benefit to our taxpayers. Brian, I agree with you. It is not necessarily a personal decision. I think that this is, I think it's up to our community. I think our community should have the opportunity to speak. So I too am a reluctant, but I am a yes.
So you guys said everything I was about to say, so that's all good. I can make this quick. No, again, I think our job is to bring this to the community to make that vote, right? And I realize my biggest struggle is that it's going to be a $75 million that I think will be difficult for some people to swallow, but I think our job is not to, you know, we've heard from the community, they want this as an opportunity to vote, so we're going to, I'm going to say yes from that perspective, but I just, like I said, I'm hesitant, but I'm, I'm okay with saying yes, because really now that kicks it into going to the community decision on what we want to do.
All right, so the motion passes, and I think we have some, some good points there, that this isn't a decision, this is a decision to bring it to the community. So we've, we've done our due diligence, I know we spent a lot of time on this, so here you go. That's, so moving on, we have another, another action item. Correct, right? I'm, oh, I'm looking at the wrong agenda, I'm sorry.
You're right.
No, so this is the resolution providing and requiring the submission for proposal. I was on the, the community hold reviewing that, that agenda, so I'm sorry for that. Do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Greg.
Before I make the motion, I'm going to just at least suggest for you to consider that maybe we talk first, or shall we? I'm, I don't know if there's consensus yet. We've had some discussion about the number.
Okay. If this resolution has been drafted by, I presume, an attorney?
Yeah, I did check if the board were to change the number, they said that I could write that in at this point.
Okay, so I, I think a discussion would be appropriate if, if we wanted to do it beforehand, so that.
No, I'm happy to make it, I just didn't know about the particulars, if we, you know, can we change it? So I'll make the motion. Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing $75 million school-building bonds to the voters of the district at the general, general primary election to be held on the 28th day of June 2022.
Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second? Thank you, Chad. All right, now discussion.
Based on our earlier discussion, I just wanted to add that, I mean, or just highlight, Dr. Biden said, we don't have to sell them all at once, we could re-send money back to the taxpayer. If it doesn't pass, we can go back in November and adjust our plans. So, and thank you, Stacy, for that feedback. I mean, I threw out a suggestion for lowering it, and there was some other discussion around that, but you, you clarified that 75 seems to be the best number.
All right, hearing nothing, we'll take it to a vote, starting with Rich.
So just make a brief comment. One of the board governance policies is that we support the decisions that we make. So even though I didn't agree with the prior one, we made a collective agreement. So I am supportive of the resolution, and I'll stand by and do whatever we can by it. So I'm a yes.
Ah, yes.
The same reluctant yes.
For the same reasons, I am the same reluctant yes.
Yes.
Yes, all right, so the motion passes. So let's move on.
Yeah, I just want to say, good work to this Board of Education. This is a big topic, and you looked at this from every angle, and you looked at it through the eyes of the community and the future of our students, and you made the decision to bring it to your community, to give feedback to you if this is what they want to do. So I appreciate your work on this.
Moving on to the second reading of policies, and this is press 108, this is an action item, so do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the policies and exhibits as presented by the Illinois Association of School Boards.
Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second? Thank you, Chad. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Mr. President?
Yes, Rich.
Yeah, so I, what I was going to bring up, and I forwarded out in notes, is making two changes to policies that we have here. In our last meeting, we had agreed to change to policy 2-20, so to our board duties, where we added two distinctive, or added two areas that were, I'm out of this, sorry, let me find it here real quick, which added two additional duties to our policies, to our 220. And that was notify the state superintendent of education promptly and in writing of the name of a licensed teacher who is convicted of a felony, along with the conviction and the name and location of the court where the conviction occurred. And the second area that we added was notifying the teacher retirement system or the state Board of Trustees promptly and in writing when it learns that a teacher is defined in the Illinois Pension Code was convicted of a felony, along with the name, location, court where the conviction occurred, so forth and so on. So my suggestion was to add those into the superintendent's or policy number 340, general school administration into that particular policy. And I know, Lori, you had provided some comments back that, hey, we don't, you know, in a policy, we don't necessarily list all the particular items, which I do agree, except for whatever reason, the, the legislature said, hey, these are new responsibilities of the board, therefore, I think it's only duly noted that we should shift those as well as delegate those to the superintendent to be very clear of our intent that the superintendent is to provide that, that particular guidance. I'll open it up for discussion on that policy.
Mr. President?
Gina.
Rich, are you suggesting that it be redundant in two policies, or that we move it from one policy to another?
I'm not sure if we can actually, I'd prefer to move it that way, but I'm not sure, I mean, that would maybe, maybe a question back to say, can we move it to that superintendent, and would it still meet the intent of the law?
Yeah, I'd have to check. That may be from law, that it now is, becomes a responsibility of the Board of Education. And then I'll just add, like Rich referenced, it is the superintendent's responsibility to carry out policy. So 99% of the things that are listed in the board section are things that my staff and I carry out on behalf of the board. That comes under the legal requirements of my contract, as well as my legal job description. Again, there are things for emphasis reasons, get put in, both like Rich said, from IASB into policy that are also in law, but also that the board may want to emphasize, but I just, I would ask the board to consider, right, is it, is it, are, are these two, or, or do we want to look across the policy manual and make sure, see if there's others that you'd want to move?
I just don't want to make it redundant in two policies from that perspective, because I mean, to your point exactly, Dr. Biden, the contract is there for you to execute on our behalf, so the reality of it is. I understand what Rich is saying, but I feel like moving it just creates redundancy, and if it's sitting where it's at, I don't think there's an issue from my perspective, so.
I would defer to the IASB on this one. I mean, they, they put it where they put it for a reason, so I respectfully disagree. I think let's not overcomplicate it, and I get your point, but.
Yeah, I think if there's a specific instance that this, this district had a unique situation, but I hear you, Brian, on that one.
And then in this case, right, we set, as a board, we set the policy, but the superintendent implements the policy, so we're on the governance end of things, so I, I am seconding other comments.
So another one that I had is on policy 4-175. Oh, sorry, thank you, Greg. On policy 4-175, so the, under screening, it talks about the, the superintendent shall perform, you know, criminal background checks, things of that nature, all those types of items, and then it says that the board president shall ensure that these checks are completed for the superintendent. So this, again, what I was maybe offering is that, do we, do we state an additional sentence in there, so as to who and the staff, or maybe this, maybe even add, as Lori suggested, is, and the superintendent shall designate the appropriate person to ensure that gets carried out, or something of that nature. But as I read it right now, is the board president shall ensure that these checks are completed. Okay. Scott, there you go.
And I would add for the board's reference that it is part of the job description and responsibilities of the assistant superintendent for personnel to complete all background checks on all employees in the school district. It's also part of school code that in hiring all employees, there must be background checks. And as the board typically would use a superintendent search firm or IASB's search process, that is part of what they do on behalf of the board. And also, in the actual superintendent contract, in my contract now, it is, it is clearly stated in there that I must participate in a successful background check for the contract to be valid. So just a reminder that it's also in those other areas. One of the things that you just have to be, I get Rich's point, right, that the board president, you're volunteering, and you got to make sure this is done ultimately, but also you have to be careful of if the board, you know, designates someone like the assistant superintendent, in the future, that could be your superintendent candidate, right? So it could be difficult to find a generalization way, again, especially since it's already covered in those other ways.
I, I don't see an issue with this, this policy, the way it's written. I think we.
Just bringing it up?
I got you.
Let's run it down, starting with Anisha.
Yes, yes.
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 All right, motion passes. Moving on to our second public address, does anybody wish to address the board during second public comment?
Buildings to private schools and the admin center, the admin staff has classroom-sized offices for the admin staff at the Dutton Administration Center, and flexible school options are popular. And Arlington Heights has a lot of early childhood care entities, and more are being built. And if you notice the, on the property tax bill I just paid March 1st, 2022, Harper Community College Palatine has a percent of pension and healthcare costs taxing districts can pay equal to 0%. I don't, you should not refer students to Harper Community College until they fix that problem. And, and use your clout and leverage to end all tax increment finance districts in Arlington Heights, to free up government staff to work on other projects and to free up cash so the rest of us can use our own money to improve our own property. And that way, the tax increment funds that sit in bank accounts can't be used by the banks to invest to. to invest to make profits for themselves. And they probably don't invest that money in Arlington Heights, when it's just sitting in their bank accounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, moving on, topics with dates to be determined. This is future and agenda items.
So we have listed, just so the board is aware, Aneeshah had asked to make sure that we assign a date to the equity audit. And so we'll be bringing that forward on May 5.
Sounds good. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, moving on.
Sorry, Mr. President, real quick, sorry.
Oh, close.
Sorry, I know, I know, I know. Because I saw that we probably already did our five-year projection. But I'd ask that in our next financial projection, we start laying out a plan of what do we do after? How do we cover the, the?
The cost.
Or if the community says no.
All right, moving on. New topics. Any new topics?
We'll look to Aneeshah, who rallied the appropriate urge. Did I read it? Did I read him?
They'll be entertaining, Brian. I'll bring the cookies. No, Dr. Bynum, as always, Derek helps put things together and whatever you need from us.
With that, we're going to adjourn this meeting, go back into closed session. We have one more topic we didn't cover earlier. So do I have a motion to adjourn open and go into closed?
Mr. President?
Yes, Rich.
I move that we adjourn open and move to closed session.
Thank you. Rich, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Aneeshah. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have adjourned. Thank you all for coming out. I'm not sure exactly how long this is going to last, but you're welcome to stay. But if not, have a good night and have a, a great spring break for those of you who will be enjoying that. Take care.
Yeah, and happy St. Patrick's Day.